Okay, I think we can get started on my end. If you're ready Chair Goran, I can start and then go from there.
Yeah, let's get going.
Okay. All right, just wanted to welcome, good evening everyone and welcome to our regularly scheduled Tuesday, November 22nd, 2022 meeting of the Hafman Bay Planning Commission. Just a couple of things to get started. We do have many people in the audience, community members in the audience in attendance this evening. This meeting is live on Comcast, local Comcast Channel 27 and the Pacific Coast TV's website. A review for the attendees, we will have the planning commission chair will open and allow for general public comment prior to specific items of public comment. He'll open it up. There will be an icon on your screen if you're on the computer. If you were on telephone, you will do star six to mute and unmute and star nine to raise and unraise your hand. Otherwise you'll have the icon hand feature. For those wanting to speak, we will recognize you as you raise your hand. So first come, first served, a type of order. And then you'll give, you'll be given three minutes of time for each commenter that will show up on the screen. Public comments were submitted after the agenda packet was posted this, this week. And we have posted all of those public comments on the bottom part of the agenda. So you'll be able to see those. Public can see those and all the commissioners have been sent those as well as staff. We do have Spanish translation now, so it is provided this evening with Victor and his crew. So I will let him do his speech prior to me turning the translation feature on. I thank you guys, everyone in the community for our continued patience during our remote meetings. And I will now hand over to Chair Goran to officially open and then we'll do translation and then we'll turn that on and go forward. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you, Bridget. So we're just gonna start, if you would join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chair, do you have anything that you need to say, Victor, before we turn it on?
Thanks, Bridget. Just when those notches, let's get them, we'll just have to have a little Spanish. Para poder hacer eso usted tendrá que hacer clic en un icono de un globo que aparecerá al fondo de su pantalla en unos, en unos instantes y después usted podrá seleccionar su idioma en español. Muchas gracias. Thank you.
Yes.
Thanks very much, Bridget. Can we have roll call?
Yes. Commissioner Gossett?
Here.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Here.
Commissioner Reddick?
I'm here.
Vice Chair Hernandez?
I am present.
And Chair Goran?
I'm here.
All commissioners are present this evening.
So we're gonna start with the approval of minutes for October 25th. Agenda, this is something, Bridget, that I could not access. Jimmy, Commissioner Benjamin?
I do. I just wanted to say that I was absent from this meeting, so I will be abstaining from this vote. Thank you.
Anyone else? I think we're good.
Same for me.
Were there any comments or questions about those minutes?
There were a few corrections and I sent them over yesterday via email and they were posted on the web, just a couple errors. And then if Commissioner Gossett would like to just speak on that one sentence that was added, but that's it.
Sure. On, let's see, page three of four of the minutes, the city engineer offered to come back to us to speak about storm, the stormwater master plan update. So that was the one change that I had put into the minutes. Thank you.
Great.
Chair, Chair Goran?
Chair King?
Thank you, if I may. It sounds to me like we maybe only have two commissioners in a position to move on the minutes if you weren't able to access them. And Commissioner Benjamin and Vice Chair Hernandez can't comment on them. So I'm wondering if we want to put this one over till the next meeting when you've had a chance to review them?
I would like to, yes. Thank you. So I don't, I don't think that's anything we need to take a vote on, is that right? We can just move it along?
Yeah, we can just continue.
So we're gonna have a quick open to public comment for any items that are not on the agenda tonight. Anyone in the public there who wants to comment on something that's not listed on the agenda, now is the time to talk. So I do see a hand up. Bridget, can you take that up?
Yeah. Yes, Commissioner, Mike Farr, I would like to speak and I will allow him to talk.
Took a while to get unmuted.
Okay.
Good evening, Commissioners and staff. The reason I'm asking to address you is that there's an item that may be coming to you. I certainly hope it's coming to you and that's the decision by the school board to pave what is often referred to as Foothill Boulevard. This is a school easement that runs just east of where we're planning to have a new mobile home park. And it has measured D certificates. And this routing has been examined numerous times in Hafman Bay's history, starting with the mid 90s. There are impacts, serious impacts there, given all the tree life and nature, et cetera. And it has a very problematic intersection with Highway 92. A dangerous one at that. Now, I, it's hard to understand why the school wants to spend $170,000 paving something that is not two lanes wide. It's only one lane wide now. You would have to take out an awful lot of trees to make it two lanes. There needs to be some clarity about what the school is planning to do because there are significant impacts there. And one would hope that there would be a permit, a coastal development permit in the works so that the planning commission will be able to apply all the historic studies that have been done there before any such activity takes place. Let us also try to remember that that routing is proposed as a trail in the city's plans, which doesn't go well with cement trucks, et cetera, on a single lane. Also, I don't know how you get two lanes, two directions going with cement trucks or what have you on a single lane. So a lot needs to be clarified and studied and permitted by the city if in fact it's feasible. Sorry, that's, I hope that's coming to you. I just wanted to address that. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all the public comment I have.
Yeah. Is there anyone else in the public who would like to comment on anything that's not on the agenda tonight? And seeing none, I am closing public comment. We're gonna move on to our first item, but.
Through the chair?
Yes, Jill.
Two, two staff matters. One, I do want to very quickly acknowledge the commenter and let you know that city staff is in contact with the Cabrillo Union Unified High Schools folks about the matter that was brought to your attention. So we are in communication and I want to reassure you about that. And then our deputy city attorney has a procedural matter that she would like to cover. It'll be brief. Thanks.
Thank you. Through the chair, I just wanted to make a quick comment. I believe our last meeting, I used the phrase, I'm, I'm raising the yellow flag in the, in the course of conversation and deliberations among commissioners. And I just wanted to clarify because I think I have started using that as shorthand over the years as an indication of my perception that the discussion might be veering off the topics that have been listed on the agenda for discussion at any given planning meeting. And just a reminder that under the Brown Act, our conversations are limited to the items that have been agendized. When I say I'm waving the yellow flag or the yellow light or whatever it was that I said, I guess we don't have yellow flags. It really is just my perception and a little warning to get you commissioners all thinking and remembering about that rule. It is not, by no means me saying everyone has to stop this conversation. And so if I say, you know, yellow light or, you know, this seems to be, you know, we need to stay on the agenda topics or something, anything like that, please feel free to ask further questions or disagree. We can discuss that. I am just trying, here to help and trying to keep us in line with the Brown Act. So I just wanted to clarify that since I think I had created maybe a little confusion at the last meeting when I used that phrase.
Yes, I did wonder about that. So thank you. Yeah, I didn't know what there was a yellow flag about. And so that's helpful. Appreciate that. And then I did want to, before we get into the first item, to open up any kind of, open up to commissioners for any ex parte communication or any recusals that might pertain to this issue coming up on the, we do have Commissioner Gossett.
Thank you, Commissioner Goran. So for item 1A, I will need to recuse myself. I live within 300 feet of the property that will be discussed this evening. So as soon as you start talking on that item, I'll turn off my camera and mic. Thank you.
And so Bridget, you're gonna be in contact with her?
Yeah, I can do that. That's not a problem.
Great. So also, Winter, I probably should have talked to you offline about this, but ex parte, just to be clear, is, so I've had a conversation with one of the people who's in this, in item 1A, Paul Nagin-Gast. That's ex parte, right? Just to be clear.
Yes, basically, the, the ex parte idea is that you want everyone, all the commissioners in the, in the room to be sort of on equal footing in terms of the information that each individual commissioner is working from. And so if you have information that you've gotten outside of the agenda packet and things that come up during the planning commission meeting, then disclosing that to the room is helpful to make sure everybody is kind of working from the same set of facts.
Great. So that's what I'm doing. Is there anyone else? Commissioner Benjamin?
Yeah, just to say, I had a, an email which I have forwarded to staff from former planning commissioner Johnson, Patrick Johnson. And it may be that that's already been distributed. If not, I defer to staff. His note asked me to read it out loud in the minutes. It was a one paragrapher, but I have forwarded, glad for someone else to read it. I had, did have a conversation with Paul Nagin-Gast. It did not bring up anything that was not in the record for me, so I don't regard it as an ex parte. Thank you.
That's good to know too. And Bridget, I assume that the Joe Butcher letter came recently enough that that is at the end of the agenda, is that right? I didn't see it there, but.
I don't know about Joe, but Patrick Johnson's email that Commissioner got and I think all the commissioners received is on the website. It's posted. Yeah, everybody's tied there.
It looks like we just got something from Joe Butcher. I didn't know if that was in there or not. Anyway, I guess he'll talk tonight. He's here. So I think we are ready to move on to that item, item 1A. Goodbye, Commissioner Gossett. And Jill, I believe you're presenting, is that right?
That is correct. Thank you, Chair Goran, and good evening, Commissioners and community members. Thank you for being here tonight on Thanksgiving week. We appreciate your diligence. The first item before you tonight is a matter of modifications to a previously approved coastal development permit for a single family home at 225 Valdez in the R1 zoning district. I, I will try to be as brief as possible. We understand you have quite a few public comments. I'll give you a quick background. We'll take a look at the proposed modifications. This will be a public hearing item and we understand the chair likes to have public hearing prior to clarifying questions and then our, your discussion and deliberation. For background, there's a lot of background on this particular project. The coastal development permit was originally approved back in April 2021. The building permit followed and was approved by the city in August 2021. A number of revisions occurred on both in advance of city review as well as with approvals pending on a permit revision, the building permit. And that was subsequently approved in March 2022. We became aware of some unpermitted development in the area of a rear addition, which will be the focus of our discussion tonight. And stopped work on that part of the project while we were trying to sort out options for the applicant that would be suitable for what they would like to, to have for their home project as well as be appropriate for meeting our permit conditions. We went through quite a bit of process with that. There were numerous modifications and you saw in your detailed staff report an analysis of that as well as all the different sets of plans associated with all of these versions of the project were attached to your report. So you, you have familiarity with what was changing from, from step to step. Those modifications were approved in September. That is the current approval and that is what we are going to be comparing this request for some additional modifications to. In brief, the proposal is to convert a portion of a previously approved covered second story terrace to conditioned space. And as previously noted, we're taking into account the original coastal development permit approval back from April. Consistency with the local coastal program. In this case, it's really emphasizing zoning standards and then the residential design guidelines. The project site is near the corner of Valdez and Potter Avenue in the Alsace-Lorraine neighborhood. It's right here, 225 Valdez. And this is a old Google street view of the house before any of the work had begun on it. The current approval and, and what was actually originally approved with the coastal development permit, it includes quite a bit of remodeling, but primarily it's a project with two additions. There is an addition on the west side of the house that includes an expansion of the first floor and a deck on, on top of that. And then an addition to the rear, which has conditioned space on the ground floor and the covered terrace that I already mentioned. We're gonna focus on this because the other matters have been reviewed and are not being proposed to, to be changed from that modification that was approved in September. On the current approval, this is the east elevation and it gives you a good sense of what that included. I put a highlight over this skylight area because the approval was conditioned to have a different roof treatment to add articulation. And there were two options that were provided to the applicant and they had not yet brought forth a plan that showed those plans conforming to that condition. So just note that the approval was, looked like this with the exception of the type of skylights that were involved. It included a open section here with a 42 inch high half wall sided like the rest of the house, an opening out at this end and some furred up, built up, shall I say, columns. They are architectural features as opposed to structural features to provide some articulation. The back, we'll also take a look at, the back included a, again, the half wall and then the center of the rear elevation for this part of this addition includes some structural components up into the ridge line of the roof. You know, go back a slide. The thing that I noted earlier about construction getting ahead of where the permit review was, we, we were informed that this entire part of the development, the second floor was being enclosed for conditioned space. And we investigated and found that that was true. And so we, we stopped work right where it was. Now, in floor plan, the approval shows that these, these little boxes with the, the Xs, that's depicting those architectural columns. So there's three on each side. And these were the intended skylights. And these are the openings to, to all the various sides. There was a spiral staircase to the west side of the, of this terrace. And the entire thing was separated from the conditioned space of the house with this, this folding door. The proposal, starting with the floor plan, the applicant would like to have more conditioned space and would like to have that be adjacent to the house and then maintain a covered terrace towards the north, north end of this structure without changing the footprint. So I'm not bringing up the, the site plan again. There's no change there. In elevation view, this proposal looks like this. The, there's a high sill window proposed for the, on, on the east elevation where in the approved version, there's an opening and then a, instead of that half wall for a railing, they're proposing a picket railing or some other type of open, open, visually open railing form. In fact, they had a deck on this house with, with picket railings that they were thinking about trying to reuse, which seemed like a good approach. So your staff report indicated some, some broad support for this. We're bringing it forward to the commission because of that fairly rich history and the numbers of changes that have occurred along the way. And in that you've been notified about this particular project and concerns about our process. And we want to make sure that this is taken, taken up by the commission at this point. We think it's appropriate. That said, we did have a staff recommendation. And I've tried to illustrate that very simply here. Our, our, our proposed recommendation would be to have a balance between the size of the conditioned space and the size of the covered terrace area. And so this, this blue highlight is meant to show an extension of this clear area where, where that opening would be. And these, this little striped box is intended to show that this would be railing in this area. And the overall length is 23 feet. And so the intent with staff's recommendation is that approximately here would be 11 and a half, and a half feet. The addition would, would be enclosed in, in that area and the rest would be open. I do want to note, just because there's some, some really a lot of passionate interest in this and we're, we're glad to see it and you know, you're gonna be talking about process in your next agenda item. But one of the things that I, I have observed in some of the communications is that this whole addition is illegal and we should have required it to be removed while, while this was being worked out. And I, I think it's important to note that this down here, the, the bottom portion, well, this, this is the, I'm sorry, I got ahead of myself. I'm gonna move down to that one. The original approval for the coastal development permit from April 2021, this is the east elevation. And the green box is showing the area that was approved to be open above the railing as well as this clear opening here with no, there's no glass. This is, this is just. This is, this is just open. And the railing itself was approved to be either obscure glass or a half solid wall. So it could have also been like this. And there were these ridge skylights. And at that time, the addition was twenty one feet deep and it had a full roof. And so I just want to note the overall mass of the structure and the the amount of the components that were approved because what had been built with our stop work. Much of it could be retained in some of the different options that we were trying to work out with the applicant. And frankly, with neighbors to get their input about it. And it would have been incredibly wasteful to remove it all and have to rebuild some of it when it was already substantially for the overall size of it was mostly already approved. Going back up a slide, just noting the item before you tonight is this proposed change. And we're showing here, of course, our staff recommendation relative to what has, what is currently approved, which is this this bottom slide here, which was the September twenty twenty two minor modification approval. So those are the, this is the upper one is the proposal and the lower one is the one that is currently on the books. And we just looked at this and I note these these squares and we are looking at how the opening area was relative to the original approval. The balance between the open portions of the space versus the closed being about fifty fifty. And wanting to make sure that the open area is larger than it was before at a minimum and that we retain that balance. And so that was the intent of the staff recommendation. I have all of the, every, every plan that is in your packet. If you need to look at any of it, please let me know. But we do want to encourage you to focus on on the the area of interest tonight. Again, this is a public hearing item, clarifying question time and discussion deliberation. The recommendation from the staff report has a lot of detail in it for different parts of of the the roof, the space and trying to be very clear about the intent of of that recommendation. You've received communication today from the applicant as well as some interested parties, including the neighbors who are making other suggestions to you. And we're happy to, after after you hear some of those presentations or discuss them, we can, we can respond to any questions you have about them. And with that, I'll go ahead and stop our presentation. And do note that our building official is is here. He can field questions. Joe Butcher, our community preservation specialist is also here. A lot of people were involved in this and have been working really hard to make sure that the the concerns about the unpermitted portions of the work were addressed and the condition of the site was cleaned up. And the the project applicant is going to, would like to speak to you. And so as an applicant, they typically get a little bit more time. So we were advising them that they could have up to five minutes. Most of your speakers have three. And they do have some presentation slides that I'll be clicking through on their behalf. And Bridget, that's Lori and Russell Ellingson and their architect is also here. I don't know if he's going to be presenting. And then from there, we encourage you to proceed with with the public hearing.
Well, I we're gonna have to I have so many clarifying questions. I misspoke earlier when I talked about Joe Butcher's note. That was just Joe Butcher forwarded. And I wanted to make sure that I didn't, I was just asking if that was included in the
In the public comment. I think everything that Joe got, he forwarded to me and I I received and it's on the website, so.
So we are going to open this up to public comment, which could be a little while. So please be patient. And we will try and clear all this up. Now is the time for anyone in the public who wants to speak to raise their hand, the virtual hand. And we will get to each of you.
So we wanted the owners first. So let me get Lori on and then we'll work our way from there.
That'd be great. Thank you, Bridget.
Okay, there you go, Lori. You should be live.
Hi, good evening all. I am I don't know where to start because obviously there is a lot of public interest. I did submit our letter to the chair and the planning commission commissioners as to what we feel are two outstanding items. I think we made a strong case for both. So those are open for discussion. But then after receiving the letter from our neighbor's attorney or for the, from the neighbor's attorney, I wanted to address each item. Am I still on? Each item, one by one. If we could do that. So we appreciate, I mean, I'm, we don't see the room, but we know that there's a lot of people listening. So we appreciate everyone's comments and concerns with our home and remodel, even if we disagree. We understand Heflin Bay is a community with longtime residents. And newcomers trying to make updates can be seen as disrupting an established community. We have not lived here as long as our neighbors and do not have established relationships within the neighborhood to ask friends to submit letters on our behalf as they have on theirs. We know we all know construction is a process and not everyone surrounding the construction project knows the details behind the scenes within the process. So assumptions can be made by outsiders looking in as we think that has happened in this case. As indicated in our letter, there are two items on the table, ridge skylights versus standard skylights and adding conditioned space. Because we care and the letters from strangers submitted affect our family, we'd like to respond to the letter that was submitted from our neighbor's attorney. And I'm just, to make it easy and to follow along, I just went through each sub letter as it was presented in that letter. To our understanding, I think there can be an unlimited number provisions to a homeowner's home as long as it's presented to the city and paid for. And it fits within those guidelines. And in item B, going major versus minor, I think that this has been discussed extensively with the city attorney and the planning director and supporting staff. I'm sorry, we're, I'm getting tense. We don't understand the purpose of the request to go into major versus minor as it only appears to delay the construction and the finality of our project. And item letter and sub letter C. As in our letter submitted to the council, mistakes were not maliciously made. We are often, as we've been accused of, as the residents of two two nine Valdez, when they requested the stop order for our addition, we did, other than waterproofing, the completed work. The city staff and the building official came into our home and reviewed our addition several times within our home and all the internal structures that you can't really see on the outside because of the waterproofing are still maintaining that structural build as as Jill has presented. In exhibit A of their letter, it shows the yellow waterproofing paper siding on the lower portion, black paper for the temporary roofing and gutters to direct water away from our home. Even though the siding contractor foreman and workers were instructed numerous times not to touch the addition. We don't control people's actions or stand behind them as they build and nail and cut. The siding workers sided the lower portion of our addition. This was immediately reported to the city from us. And it 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 was, but it didn't seem to be that big of a deal or or was in that significant since that portion was not in question. On a second occasion, when my husband wasn't at home and I was in meetings, two workers arrived to complete unfinished portions of the siding. Before starting, I walked them around the house to review what they had to complete. Regardless of these precautions, the two workers sided parts of the top east addition. Upon discovery that evening, when we walked around, we immediately notified the city via emails and called the company to discuss how this negatively affected us. The city then cited us. In section D, I found it to be very confusing. I couldn't follow along. But I think articulation in general is subjective and we think the proposed plan looks beautiful. That is our opinion. As illustrated in Jill's presentation, we are opening up way more than it was in the original plan. It's increasing the opening at the very end with a smaller beam there. The opening completely takes out a wall and puts again railing that was already used in our house for sustainability issues. And again, the bottom remains the same. However, going over this written document, I was trying to come up with ways that may fit into the design regulations. If if we don't feel, if you don't feel the above does. We would like to propose a compromise. The offered settlement would be to keep that faux outer beam to indicate the separation between the addition. We can add or just put a, what is it called? A belly band at the end to to separate the addition, to add articulation. However, I don't think this looks as beautiful. But this is something to consider or to think about to address the argument that there isn't separation or articulation. The roof was not, is not up for modification, but the only part of it is to add to switch the skylight scheme instead of ridge to standard skylights. The additional roof plane is is twenty three inches long. So I don't understand the comment of the forty seven foot of linear length without articulation. Also in the section of their letter, in exhibit C of the attorney's letter, the lower picture is not a current picture of our home or even when we purchased our home. I don't understand how a picture from years before us owning our home are relative. And then on section E, I'm sorry if I'm talking fast. I'll try to slow down. On section E, unfortunately, I I feel for them. They have projected plans. We obviously have no idea, but we feel it should have maybe been brought up in the original hearing. Again, the pictures that were illustrated in exhibit C are irrelevant. The previous owner of our residence did not permit any of his deckwork. When initially submitting plans for our remodel, we did consider all neighbors, the the neighbor to our north, our west and our east. But because we're just talking about the east, we provided these pictures to the city in our in our proposal. And section F, oh, and then in this portion of E, we provided this picture of where the tree is in location of viewing out towards the west. Sub letter F. We we're not in the construction business. We don't have any idea of anything that goes on in the construction business. We were told of of field changes. I thought by asking people if things were okay that they were okay after the first revision of of our addition was noted that it wasn't okay. I, from that point on, continuously called Leep and the building official and asked if my suggested modifications were okay. He said, yes, but these are the things that you need to do. They were permissible. And we moved before. It was a stamped copy. But there is nothing that we did as secretly or tried not, tried to get away with something. From the stop order, we have been forthcoming and diligently working with the city, even with the most minor things as can we store some stuff on the bottom addition floor, almost afraid to walk into our own home and addition. I think section G, it's just been worked out with the city staff and attorney. Lastly, our request for conditioned space is thirty three square feet under the allotted amount for which each residential owner is permitted. We've addressed the design concerns and ridge skylight versus standard skylight affects no one. We understand, we don't understand the constant demand for unforgiveness or why strangers would have so much animosity towards us and try to recuse us of our requested conforming modifications. We appreciate your time, your consideration into our home and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to be clear about, I guess, one thing, which is we're, I understand this is, has felt personal. But the planning commission really doesn't do conflict resolution. We're just like about the details of what's in this house. And so I appreciate the the sort of the rundown of some of those details. That's very helpful. Bridget, who is next?
Okay, next we have Amy Johnson.
That's Patrick Johnson's using Amy Johnson's iPad. How's everybody doing tonight? Can you hear me?
Yes, we have you.
Digging the new way of doing this on the couch, guys. It's pretty cool, sitting there watching Zoom. So I've got some issues. Only issues I have is public input and always seeing that there's, you know, there's people involved in making changes and decisions when we have a master plan of what was approved and then all of a sudden it gets modified. And then the input's not there. And then at the end, it's a different project. And with the, with all the, I love the first initial project from what I saw, what Paul showed me. I thought it was great. And then he starts showing me the other and how it transforms into this flat wall facade, which is what we were fighting against back in the day when I was on, because it just doesn't look appealingly beautiful. And you take all the things, the columns, the decorative things on the deck and all the things that we're trying to do to break this up so it looks good are now being slowly pulled away from this project. So now it's just a big flat wall with two windows. So the original project, I'm saying, love it. The, as things are changing and evolving, I don't approve of it or I couldn't approve of it. And then as what was said, it's outside looking in. We are the outsiders that have to look in on this from the, from this point on, which could be setting precedents now from from this point on to the next project, to the next project. You could show a beautiful project over here and then all of a sudden get approval. And then down the road, it's not the project that was approved. So that's where I have an issue with this. And I loved the project from the beginning and what was approved, but I do have issues the way I'm seeing it now and what I'm seeing current photos of. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Next, we have Rosalyn Lima.
Thank you. Thank you for doing this. And my only, I just want to speak on behalf of Lori. So Lori and Russ, actually. I've known them for over ten years. They're very diligent. And as a homeowner and a home builder myself, we make, everybody makes mistakes. And everybody, you know, has a last minute change of thought. I don't think anybody should be penalized for that, whether you're remodeling your kitchen, your garage, whatever. Changing plans or, as the prior speaker said, having something possibly monstrosorous to look at. This is the back end of the house. You don't see this in the front. And it is their property, they're within their, what Half Moon Bay denotes as acceptable. And the only thing I, you know, when this came up and Lori and Russ was talking to me about it, was the house on Poplar and Railroad. So I remember the original house that was not on the corner, which had the lot right on Poplar and Railroad. It was facing the ocean. And then another house got built. There was a lawsuit. And the city approved the house right on Railroad and Poplar. And that house completely blocked the house right next to it. But that house was approved. I'm sure, I know a lawsuit was also put and a stop was put on that house. But the city approved it. They're still neighbors. They're still friends. And I think Half Moon Bay has, you know, all the neighbors, including my neighborhood, which is House Stacey Lorraine. We have to work together as neighbors. And it might be, this is just how it is. People have tried to put houses in front of our house and it's like, we work together. A compromise was made. Yeah, we still have blocking, but it is what it is. And sometimes we just have to get to that point. But I'm very saddened to hear that Lori and Russ has been harassed by the neighbors in their neighborhood. If that's just not Half Moon Bay. I've never heard of that happening in Half Moon Bay where blocks of people will go against your neighbor. So I'm hoping the commissioner will decide to go with Lori and Russ. Thank you for your time.
Thanks very much.
Next is Half Moon Bay Bridge, David de Glogi.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Oh, cool. So I'm going to stay out of the, is it cosmetically appropriate or not? I originally looked into this because I am friends with Hazel, full disclosure. But I'm speaking as a member of the Half Moon Bay community and I'm speaking to the future, not the past. The bottom line here is if you set aside the long narrative, the applicants built an unpermitted structure. And it doesn't matter if that unpermitted structure is a minor or major modification. They built an unpermitted structure and I'm not accusing them of being bad people or anything else. It doesn't matter whether their contractor was ill-advised or gave them bad advice. Or if there was an intent, which I kind of doubt. The point is, if you don't reset this back to the original permitted state and either go through the process again, keep it red tagged and go through the process again, or require that they put it back to a compliant project with that state. And Jill, I know it's incredibly wasteful to remove it, so I'm not advocating for that necessarily. But what we're doing is we're setting the stage for the future. If you say, okay, well, we'll make a few brushstrokes and you're good to go. Every single person who builds a building in Half Moon Bay going forward is going to know they can screw with the plans and get their way out of it on the back end. That is not equitable. That is not how we are supposed to do things. We are supposed to be a nation of laws, not people. So this whole circumstance sucks. I think that there are different locations we could look to how we got here. Those aren't relevant now as far as your consideration tonight. Your consideration is purely, is this even legally permissible to modify at this point? And the simple answer is no, it's not. Everything that's there right now, or at least a significant part of it, was built as an unpermitted structure. And that's what I think you should be thinking of. And to speak to one of you who's right in the middle of my screen, I don't know if he's on the middle of your own else's screen, but 10 years ago, Mr. Benjamin, you were fighting with the city tooth and nail because they did unpermitted work in the Quixote Water Course. You know exactly what I'm talking about here. It's the principle that matters, not the actual act. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next I have Brian.
Hello, everyone. I am the neighbor directly to the north of the residents in question. And I don't have all the details. I'm not going to pretend I do. But I have been through the building process. I built this house. I'm very familiar. I've worked with Jill. I've been in front of this board before. For buildings I did for Mr. Kachet, that one is existing and it's being constructed as we speak. What I want to say is that the, my neighbors, my new neighbors over the last year or so, I have found to be very considerate, very professional. I know that they are not the type to do anything that would be deliberately problematic. I think they just want to build a house and not a huge, not a huge extension. I mean, they could probably have built a much larger, given the FAR, I think of that lot, this big lot, seventy-five hundred square foot lot. And I was very immediately concerned about this because before the last owner sold the place, he took down a bank of cypress trees and fully obstructed my house from their house. So now we have no obstruction. This is a full-on view I catch twenty-four seven if I'm in my living room. And it's, I think quite frankly, it wasn't the most beautiful house to begin with, but I think what they're doing is only an improvement. From my viewpoint, it's given much more articulation than what had been there in the past. And it, I think, is a betterment to the neighborhood. And I said I wasn't there a long time ago, but I know what the process is like to go through with you guys. And I know especially to go through with Jill, that it was probably done correctly. And I would do what I can to let these people move forward. Thank you.
Okay, next we have is Mike Ferrera.
Thank you, commissioners and staff. One of the things that got me interested in politics in the first place back in the nineteen eighties was when the largest developer in town graded an area without permit. And when I talked to him about it, his statement was, it's easier to get forgiveness than permission. And in the nineteen eighties, he got that forgiveness. I've sort of never forgotten that moment. And I think it's very important as the neighbors are putting forth that we have adherence to law and policy guidelines, et cetera. Planning commissioners are quasi-judicial and this is probably about as judicial a decision as they get. You have to sort through this. The neighbors are articulate. They've hired an excellent law firm that has quite a long established reputation in land use. I read the letters. They're worth careful study. And I think that, and I also need to note that the applicants had professional help on their side. And so one has to ask, how did these things happen? And so I think the neighbors have legitimate complaints. And I would ask for your most judicious decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Paul Nagengast.
Good evening, planning commissioners, city staff and interested community members. I am Paul Nagengast. I live at two-two-nine Valdez Avenue, which is adjacent or next door to the easternmost neighbor to the project. And I really wanted to say something, and it wasn't in my script, but we did not request a stop work, city issued stop work. And the neighbors, if they still believe that, that's been part of the problem. And we don't harass the neighbors. Our issue has always been the process with the city. And I just had to say that because these items just came up. But I thank you for scheduling this meeting to hear and discuss and make a determination on the items. Both agenda reports tonight are full of information and attachments that can be very confusing and present differing viewpoints to be considered. Item one A on the agenda tonight has what I consider serious rule violations that we as a community are expected to follow. There were several references in tonight's report referring community members to the Peninsula Conflict Resolution Center, which paints a picture of neighbor versus neighbor. But these recommendations were only suggested when staff could not have support from us to not follow them. We have tried to inform staff. Our concerns are with the city's implementation of the process and what rules are not being followed, not directing any will against our neighbors. We know this is equally frustrating for our neighbors. And we've had to remove their misdirected animosity towards us on social media platforms, as well as try and disregard their framing of our intent about their project to city staff. We had requested city staff to attend the Conflict Resolution Center with myself and my wife Hazel, but were advised city staff does not attend, only sets appointments. The staff agenda report advises you on what staff protocol has been and what staff has exercised in the past. We had serious concerns about how we thought this process would be and realized how this process was being implemented. We decided we needed expensive legal help for us to understand what processes are or are not being followed by the city. We are thankful for the opportunity to talk about those processes and what might be beneficial to improve any processes part of the item one B, to minimize the potential of a similar occurrence being experienced by others. Furthermore, staff is indicating in the report they made decisions that wall plane articulation be maintained to the extent feasible at this point in the process. Let's remind ourselves that at this point in this process, it's an illegal structure with a sort of stop work requesting the planning commission to approve of non-compliant negotiated fit into the residential guidelines. As you can see from pictures and marked up drawings or part of our letter packaged submitted to you, the massing and bulk created by increasing the wall plane from the existing home wall plane of nineteen feet to forty-two feet with twenty-three feet addition extension. And with a roof so close to our property line that roof eaves cannot be provided, which I believe is what the city residential design guidelines wanted to prevent. And yet, here we are. Unfortunately, we were only talking about the second story, but the first story addition was reviewed and improved with a total forty-two length wall plane with no inserts or offsets. Do we decide city's design guidelines are not necessary and we send the message to the community that regardless of what was approved as permission, you can build something different illegally and submit for a different approval and forgiveness will be granted? If this is the case, the city should seriously consider removing the residential design guidelines and let construction occur and permit items after construction. However, I suspect coastal commission will want to comment on that approach when planning development permits include coastal development permits such as this project. In closing, we request that you exercise your discretion in this case to deny the requested revisions, which do not conform to the residential guidelines. If you choose to proceed with approval, we request that you impose the modified conditions of approval that appear on page six of our attorney's letter on this item. These modified conditions bring the applicant's revision into conformance with the design guidelines and minimize their negative impact on the enjoyment and desirability of our property. Again, I thank you for your time and appreciate your thoughtful insights for this item.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Bill Kors.
Can Bill Kors please try to keep to three minutes? Thanks.
Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Well, it's been twenty years since I've been to a planning commission meeting, since I brought forward the Methodist Church project and also Seacrest and brought those to fruition in Half Moon Bay. So it's a pleasure to be back here tonight. I'm a resident at two-three-three Valdez, which is two houses to the east of the applicant and the applicant's process, project. I've watched this process up close and in detail over the last two years since inception. I've commented in prior letters to the city about kind of the sloppiness of the project and the impact it's had on the neighborhood, which has been mitigated since the letters and some of the recent projects issues were brought forward. I do not have a strong opinion. I'm not an expert in code. I will leave that to the commission. I am a believer that if code is enacted, it's up to the commission to enforce that code. And I will leave it to the proposals that Paul and others have brought forward of the shortcomings of the project that need to be corrected to legalize it under current code. My concern, however, is one of precedent. And this is a project which may have a precedent for other projects in other neighborhoods in our neighborhood. And I'd say if I lived in two-two-nine Valdez in Paul's house and that project went up next to mine, being contiguous to mine, I would have significant concerns with that project. And I would be in front of the planning commission with a similar initiative as Paul Nightingast has provided. But it does not impact us directly, so I am not raising that issue tonight. And I'd also say if a project like that went up on the western side contiguous to the applicant, I think the applicant would have issues with that project as well. It is an intrusive project in terms of the look and feel of the, of the property at two-two-nine architecturally. And I believe it will have a significant impact on the future resale value of that house and will be a financial liability in the future to that property. So those are my comments. I will yield my remaining thirty-seven seconds back to the commission. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Looks like we have one more. H. Jonas.
Good evening, planning commissioners. I am the next door neighbor to Lori and Russell. I live at two-two-nine Valdez Avenue. I disagree with the staff recommendation to approve minor modifications to the coastal development permit for their project. I disagree because what is being proposed is not consistent with the city's residential design guidelines. It is currently built and was done so without getting the proper approvals from the city and is a violation. It condones after the fact approval for bad actors who build projects without first receiving city approvals. It sends a very strong message to builders and property owners that the city of Half Moon Bay is tolerant and forgiving, that it is okay to build whatever they want. And when they are caught, they need not worry because the city will find a way to excuse them. It is an unfair and inacquitable solution for our community because it grants exceptions for violators, the bad actors. But those same exceptions would never be granted to those who followed the rules from the onset. It is an inacquitable solution for me personally. Just because the property owners did not educate themselves about their project and because the city did not actively monitor the project, I am now forced to accept and bear looking at an eight-hundred-and-forty-square-foot wall with small unbalanced windows and a pitched roof. I see this view every day from my bedroom, family room, upstairs balcony and backyard. How fair is that to me? I've been told not to get into the weeds and not to point out every detail of how the city reached this junction. It is difficult for me to get, to not get into the weeds because I am a detailed person. I was troubled when I learned that the property owner sought and received verbal approval from the building official. Because of that approval, they built what now exists. Why did that happen? The staff report states that the building inspector discovered unpermitted construction of a one-point-five-foot increase in length to the addition. But because the percent increase in the square footage fell below ten percent of the original approved square footage, the building official approved the change effectually, bringing that out of violation. What is not said in the staff report is exactly when the building official conducted that inspection. Through this process, I learned that the city requires inspection of the footings, the footing forms before concrete foundations are of the footings for the footing forms before concrete foundations are poured. I know that the forms were constructed in early December and the concrete was supported on Martin Luther King Day, a public holiday in January. Incidentally, the concrete truck blocked my driveway for four hours. I know that the city approved the revised plans in March seventeen. It is confusing to me why the city took over a month to issue their approval for that inspection, which occurred, which should have occurred in January for before the concrete was laid. More importantly, I'm in white. I'm wondering if the city planning and building department conducted a thorough review of the impact that the increased floor area would have on the wall plane length along the east side of the property. I would think that staff would have evaluated that aspect to see if the uninterrupted wall length along the east side was consistent with the building guidelines. Okay, I'll stop getting into the weeds. Finally, I want to express that I don't appreciate my tax dollars being used by city staff to find ways to approve illegally built structures. I don't appreciate the full force of the city's resources used to fix violations for bad actors. I would happily accept conflict resolution with the city staff to resolve how the city can use building guidelines that support the amendments and also enforce equitable actions for addressing violations. Not send the message to the cities of half, please do not send a message that the city of Hafman Bay will be tolerant of violators and will grant forgiveness to everyone who chooses to build whatever they want bef- without first getting approval from the city.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Um, we do actually have a couple more.
Yeah. Okay, um, next we have is Justin Kern.
Hey, good evening. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
I'm I'm the homeowner at two, two, one immediately west of the project. I I and look, I, there's a lot said and I I don't need to repeat any of it. Um, I want to thank all the neighbors for their passion around this, both positive and and those who've had issues because I'm, I I have been unfortunate enough to live in communities where people did not invest in their homes. And this is a far better position to be as fraught as it might be. Um, and, you know, I I have to say the only the only two comments I'll make is one, I think there's a difference of substance and a false equivalency between an example that a previous commenter gave between a whole area being bulldozed as a, as a, a, without planning commission approval and then forgiveness granted later and somebody who's whose project has uh, may or may not have moved beyond the bounds of normal course uh, changes that happen in the course of a building project. That's really up to the planning commission to decide. From from our perspective, we obviously have the benefit of being west. I I haven't been uh, exposed to those differences. And and, you know, beyond saying thanks to all the neighbors, I I also have to say, again, with the benefit of being to the west, Lori and Russ have handled this with transparency in the issues that were going on with the city, the changes, et cetera. So I appreciate everyone's time. Um, and and just once again, thanks for the investment emotionally and and financially in the neighborhood. It's important that part of this process also yield a a system that allows people to continue doing so. Because for whatever folks feel about property values, these are the types of projects that have value in the neighborhoods, um, not not deferred maintenance and 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 deprecation. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Reba.
Okay, um, last we have is Camus Steinmet.
Okay, good evening commissioners. My name is Camus Steinmetz and I'm a land use attorney with the law firm Jorgensen Segal McClure and Plagel. And my clients Paul and Hazel live next door to two, two, five Valdez Avenue and are the most impacted by this proposed coastal development permit amendment. For the reasons set forth in my letter on this item I submitted this morning, we respectfully urge you to exercise your discretion to deny the proposed amendments before you, which seek to legalize unpermitted construction after the fact. Alternatively, if you choose to proceed with approval, we request that the approval be processed as a major amendment pursuant to the zoning codes coastal development permit provisions and that you exercise your discretion to impose the modified staff recommended conditions that appear on page six of my letter. We request three mi- three primary modifications to the conditions of approval recommended by staff. One, that the enclosed condition space be limited to twenty-five percent of the total length of the terrace, reducing the flat plain wall to twenty-five feet in length. Two, that the roof over the open unconditioned space be removed entirely. Three, that a deed restriction be imposed to prevent any further enclosure or conversion of the condition space. We believe these modifications to the staff recommended conditions should be made in order to make the required findings of approval set forth in zoning code section fourteen, three, seven, oh, four, oh, that I quote, "The project has been designed in conformance and consistency with the single family residential design guidelines." That's one of the required findings of approval. And neither the applicant's proposed revisions nor staff's recommended conditions conform with the single family residential design guidelines. Section three, twenty of the guidelines require an inset slash offset or plane change on long walls of greater than twenty-five feet in length. The applicant's proposed revisions would result in a thirty-four foot long flat wall with no plane change or articulation. We don't believe the belly band or faux beam now offered by the applicant meets the intent of a plane change or articulation. And staff's recommended conditions would result in a thirty foot long wall with no plane change or articulation. Our requested modifications to the staff recommended conditions would reduce the easterly wall to twenty-five feet in length with no plane change or articulation. And this not only brings the project in to conformance with the guidelines, it would, in keeping with the purpose of the guidelines, greatly reduce the impact of the proposed project on my client's use and enjoyment and desirability of their property. Limiting the wall length to twenty-five feet would allow for a more open looking and less oppressive appearance that will preserve some remaining view of the sky and sunlight into their property and provide some aesthetic relief from the unpermitted long, flat, solid wall and high pitched roof that currently looms over them in place of the ocean and sky views they previously enjoyed. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Um, is there anyone else in the public who uh, would like to speak on uh, this? Now is the time. Um, seeing none, I am closing public comment. And I am opening this to commissioners. Does anyone have uh, clarifying questions or concerns about this issue? We have Commissioner Benjamin first. Can't hear you.
Works better if I'm not muted. Um, thank you. So I do have a few clarifying questions um, before sort of weighing the the information, looking at the timeline for the project and listening to some of the comments um, and looking at some of the pictures. I saw um, some differences in um, models of what people might think is um, on our agenda for this item. As I grasp this, there was an original coastal development permit. There was a March amendment to that coastal development permit. And I just want to be clear in my mind that that March permit is the point of departure from which we're being asked to consider additional changes. Am I understanding that correctly?
Um, staff will jump in if that's okay, Chair Gorn. Uh, let me walk back through that. The original coastal development permit was approved in April twenty twenty-one. A conforming building permit was approved in August twenty twenty-one. Construction commenced on and there were some modifications made in the field and there were also some modifications that were desired. And they were documented and approved through a revision of the building permit in March twenty twenty-two. Uh, planning staff having reviewed the changes and um, ensuring that the extension that had been done in advance of approval, which going to be real clear, we we do not I condone this. Um, but that that change resulted in less than a sev- uh, ten percent uh, difference to the addition. And so that modification, that revision to the building permit represented a modification to the coastal development permit. Then, following that, there was uh, a lot of work with with our applicant on um, trying to address additional work that was done without a permit in terms of enclosing the space, remembering that the bulk of the space was actually already approved. But they were um, going farther than what the permit had allowed in terms of being an open covered terrace. So the conclusion was that they applied at that point for a very detailed review of all the remaining modifications that they sought and they were also looking to uh, return the um, the structure to uh, basically the form that had been approved with the original April twenty twenty-one permit, which was a covered terrace with openings in different locations, um, notably a foot and a half longer than what had been with the CDP. So the matter before you is um, an approved coastal development permit, including minor modifications that were approved in um, and documented as such with an appeal period having been offered and um, expired. No, no appeal was taken up. So we consider the coastal development permit to have been properly modified per the September documentation, which is attached to your staff report. And this is a modification to that.
Okay, so thank you. And thank you for uh, communicating that important nuance, which is that there was an original coastal development permit. There were uh, changes to the building permit. And then there was conversations about uh, the significance of those changes and an opportunity for appeal. And having not heard any appeals, that's where the 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 position, staff position is that that is a point that while there was not a uh, a formal amendment with a no flaw to uh, the coastal commission and all that, that's the point that we consider that uh, is covered under coastal development permit approvals prior. And that's the baseline that you're visualizing for us to consider today. Am I right? Do I get it better now? Okay, thank you. Then uh, my next question had to do, uh, as you know, um, I pay a lot of attention to I I'm better at parts of the code other than the design guidelines, so I'm going to defer questions about that to my colleagues who are more expert. I noted that we received a comment from Patrick Johnson, um, a former planning commissioner. Uh, I understand it's in the record. Um, he asked me to read it out loud, but he did provide some comments that were substantially the same and it is in the record. Um, so I I think that his his concerns are are noted. Having said that, I don't feel like it's next part to communication anymore. I wanted to ask about the the legal interpretation, so probably a question for Winter of uh, stop work. I did go back and look in the code and I just searched on the word stop work and every time I saw the word stop, I got a lot of hits. There were just a couple of hits on the term stop work. And it had to do with what happens if someone doesn't adhere to a stop work order. It sort of, you know, was talking about sort of willing violators. The tone of that did suggest that maybe it had to do with a more limited uh, class of violators. Um, it wasn't, it looked to me when when I did the search, like this particular applicant or the workers at this spot, while they may not have stopped their entire project, were not in the same class, not because of will, but because of the type of project that's involved as those who were the subject of that stop work order. I actually have the citation up. I can dig it up. But maybe you can, since some of the comments we've heard tonight had to do with how come the work didn't stop? Maybe you can enlighten us about how how you think about that.
Winter?
Yeah, I'm happy to. Um, so um, there's sort of a factual answer and a legal answer. And so um, I want to be clear that um, Jill and staff did instruct the applicant to stop work on the portion of the project that um, was problematic. That was outside of what had been approved in the CDP. Um, and this is, um, you know, the city has a lot of discretion in how they enforce their code. Uh, and to my mind, this was a a pragmatic and practical solution that didn't slow down the parts of the project where that were proceeding in compliance with the permits. Um, as I think Jill mentioned in her presentation, um, I think um, staff was really trying to balance and keep in mind um, the uh, disruption that's caused to the community by ongoing construction and wanting to keep that as short as possible since there had already been an approved permit for work to be done and making sure that um, that uh, the city could resolve and fix and remedy uh, any noncompliance with the permit. And so um, I think that this is, you know, a a stop work order um, is a standard enforcement tool to do exactly what city staff did here if there is a violation of of a permit uh, or some other violation of the code. Um, and I think here the the issue is, I don't even know if it's an issue, but the factual uh, um, issue is that the city only required work to be stopped on a particular portion of the amendment or of the addition as opposed to all of the work on the addition. Um, but I don't know if that answers your question about the code. I think the code is um, not very uh, forthcoming about stop work orders. It's more considered a tool in the toolbox uh, of the city as um, a regulator and an enforcer of the code and permit conditions.
Yeah, well, if it, so thank you. That is a helpful answer. I did recover my my search. The reference to stop work appears as a section of the fire code. Um, it was uh, it was an amendment to uh, the fire code. And I couldn't find other specific references to that term. So I, my sense is that's consistent with your understanding that it's a little bit less black and white about what stop work means, what's the scope of that. And I I wanted to test my understanding, apparently a little better than the timeline. So thank you for that. I also wanted to ask about the condition space versus unconditioned space. Um, because that's pretty technical. Um, from the, you know, when I look at the applicant's perspective and I look at the uh, some of the neighbors who have commented on it. Um, and there seem to be uh, some questions concerning um, whether this would, whether the changes that are proposed have an effect on whether or not the project's condition space conforms with our building guidelines or whether this is an effort to have a solomonic compromise between what's been done and what could conform. And I think it would be helpful shedding more light than heat, I think, to spend a minute looking at that and trying to understand what the ramifications are of the changes in the amount of condition space. Could you enlighten us in the public on that again, please?
Thank you. I'm, I think I should pull the plans up. Um, so can you?
Yeah, I definitely need a plan.
Okay. We'll get to the floor plan. Hold on.
Yeah, and while you're digging for that, I I do want to reiterate what I think I uh, Chair Gorn mentioned in passing, which is Chair Goran mentioned in passing, which is there is a fair amount of heat in the conversation that we've heard from the public. Things like this come up from time to time. It seems like every few years, something hot comes along and gets people excited. And as one of the other speakers said, I think the passion is good. I think it's really important to focus on the scope of what the planning commission can do and not what we should do if someone thought we could do anything. Because different people are going to have really different takes of what they think we should do. So I'm hopeful that when we come out of this process, everyone will have felt that they have been heard. Because the views are so different, I'm pretty sure we're not going to be able to satisfy everybody. So we're probably going to be have have to do what we think is right and accept that some people are going to be less happy. And I'm sorry for them. Okay, we have a plan. No more vamp.
All right. Thank you for waiting. Orienting ourselves again with the site plan and noting that we are focused on the rear addition, which is to the north of the property. The approval that I was just referring to from September with the modifications that were approved back in September twenty twenty two, just a couple of months ago, included all this articulation that you heard about with these these columns and then these openings and the conditional approval included a different skylight format according to the original CDP or another option. The whole space is open to outside air. So it's a partially enclosed out outdoor space and it's fully roofed and has partial walls, including on the rear side. I don't have the west elevation handy, but it it's basically the opposite of this on the east side. And we would assume the use of the space to be typical of what folks use their decks for and we could imagine all kinds of things going on out there. We we actually get a lot of feedback about deck additions and we have hearings for them because the use of that space can concern some neighbors. And there are guidelines about it. There are setbacks. There are a number of other things that have to do with outdoor space. Obviously, any activity that's going on outside is not going to be soundproofed, for example, from from neighbors. It's it's just, it's just out there. The we'll move forward. This is the floor plan for the space that we were just looking at and these openings that you saw in in those various elevations. Now, this is the kind of the contrast of the conditioned versus unconditioned space. So this is what the applicant is proposing, which is to close this and make it into a conditioned or heated and cooled and fully enclosed space that is here, it looks like it's a some kind of an entertainment type of room or a family room. And it would have solid walls up to the eaves on all sides and have a window on one side and a sliding glass door of some type on on the north side. And then the unconditioned space would be smaller. The use of it might be more limited than what it could be in in the larger case. Whether one is more intense use than another is is a question as to what criteria you're thinking about. The increase of condition space, condition space has to be considered in the calculation for floor area ratio. And so the city does have a limit of fifty percent FAR, and this conforms to that that maximum within I think it was on the order of thirty five feet, square feet. The understanding around that is a lot of outdoor spaces aren't included in the floor area ratio calculation because in terms of bulk and mass, they tend to have a lighter touch because they have more open sides. Sometimes they're covered, many times they are not. And so from a perspective of of the mass of the structure, outdoor space tends to have have a lesser impact. Depending on how outdoor space is used, however, you could, you know, have barbecuing and music or parties or who knows what. So we get actually a lot of feedback. And I'm going to use this as an example of of kind of the range of input that staff has from when we have hearings about projects like this. Some neighbors are absolutely insistent that they would want to have a very transparent railing. They like the idea of, you know, the see through it, both both the folks who live in the house and or their next door neighbors. Others absolutely are adamant that they want this to be solid. They don't want to see the barbecue and the lawn chair and so these things come up and we try to work them out. In fact, the commission, you had a project within the last year or so where one side of the deck, you approved it to be solid and the other side is open. And the applicant was comfortable doing that because it satisfied the neighbors on both sides of the property. And it was a healthy conclusion. So that is just a kind of a nuance about outside space to help you think about its intensity of use and the difference between the enclosed space and the open space. One thing that the design includes is a high cell window. You know that that's a preference in the design guidelines for second story windows that face the side yard neighbors is to have high cells. You'll notice they have another high cell window that was preexisting and I think just just getting replaced. In this case, they were going to have obscure glass, which is also a design guideline intention on understanding, however, that you've heard a lot about the wall plane and folks are measuring the wall plane back, I believe, to this this notch where you can see the the reef line cuts in. So I, I don't know, I'm I'm starting to talk about, I'm rambling about the sign, but did I get around it?
Can I actually jump in here, Jimmy?
Question answered. Commissioner Benjamin, does that answer your question?
It did. I was going to segue to the articulation question, but I'm happy to be interrupted. I've been talking too long already. Thank you.
We'll just come back to, we have a lot more questions. So can we come back to you? Thank you. Vice Chair Hernandez?
So there's two questions that I want clarification on. The first one is we have a project that was permitted in April twenty twenty one. At some point, it became clear that the project is no longer conforming to the permit. The applicant came before the city. There was a process of getting a conforming permit in August of twenty twenty one. Was this duly noticed? Did the neighbors in the area receive plans? Was there any kind of procuring around this? What's the process we went through where we went from August twenty twenty one to having an approved permit in September? Can you help me understand that? That's the first question.
So we we worked out a notification process. This was an unusual circumstance where we had learned of neighbor interest that we didn't know about from the public hearing. And typically with minor modifications, this this isn't something that we would normally do, but we notified all the neighbors around the property. And then we learned about some other interested parties and made sure to that they were informed, that they had a copy of our intended approval and clarity about an appeal period. And the plans were made available. And I believe that all the information you described was provided. We did not have a hearing.
But you had already gone through a public hearing that nobody went to.
Yeah.
And then you had a process where you notified neighbors. You've heard that there was concern. You went above and beyond to provide notification. And so then the contention that this is an illegal structure, there's an argument being made there, but I think is wrong because now you've got a permit that says this structure is conforming. Is that?
It's, we're in a, we're in an in between phase right now. So let me attempt to explain this.
So I'd like to understand the distinction between what is now no longer conforming versus what was approved in August. That's that's what I'd like to understand because people are throwing very scary terms. I'd like to understand, like, what is unconforming from the September permit at this point?
All right. So this is what was approved in September. And it doesn't look like this right now.
We're not seeing the plans, Jill.
Oh, I'm sorry. I am, but hang on. I apologize. All right. Do you have that now?
Yes, that's it.
Thank you. This is what was approved in September. But this is not the condition of this structure at this moment. At right now, these columns have not been furred out. And these openings are not where they're not there because this had been enclosed. So if the applicant goes forward to implement what was approved in September, they will need to do some deconstruction, which our building official has reviewed. And they will need to build up these columns, these architectural columns, and remove the enclosed portions that need to be fully open and finish it off the way that this is approved through the September permit. So it's modifiable to meet the code. It's, I think, an overstatement to say the whole structure is illegal because most of what is there could would be retained should those modifications be made to create this final design.
So so the structure is largely conforming, but the final design is not because of the bulk and the mass. That's basically the issue as it stands right now. But then you have this new proposal which seeks to address those concerns. So it's not about the size. The size has already been approved. You have a conforming project for the the bulk of the project, the the actual extension here. What we're talking about is does this do a better job of conforming with the design guidelines? That's really the question at hand at this point. Is that fair?
It's one of the questions. I think it's fair. I think one of the challenges here is that because because it's going in the reverse order, it's it's difficult to accomplish everything. We believed we were under the impression that a design approach similar to what is now being proposed with modifications that we're recommending. Clearly, there's additional modifications that a neighbor is interested in. But we were under the impression that an approach like this would be in the better interest and preferred by the neighbor. And we understood that very early when this was starting to become a real. So it's hard to have a creative solution at this point that satisfies everyone that is going to fully conform to the design guidelines.
Well, and the design guidelines are guidelines. The opening section of the guideline lays out what they're there for. The original house doesn't conform with the guidelines. I think there's examples of the original house as a don't do this in the design guidelines. So you know, it's 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 an important part of our design process, but what you're trying to get to here is you, the staff is making a recommendation to support this with an improvement that makes it better adhere to the design guidelines. That's the intention. Regardless of whether your drawing made that happen, the intention here is give this a little give this a little more dimension, give it a little more depth, make it not a giant wall, which is one of the major complaints people, a giant flat plane, which is what people are complaining about with the current structure.
I, I'm sorry, I I don't mean to nitpick on this, but I want to be really clear because as you you heard, people have been studying this very carefully and I just, I I want to come back through this. This modification does not quite conform. What is currently approved, we believe conforms that this is open enough that it achieved that wall plane break. However, to accomplish a design that has a more significantly open portion towards the back of the structure and yet retains some usefulness of this addition for enclosed space, we ran over the wall plane lengths by a few feet. Now, there's a recommendation from someone to to pull it back farther to conform to the design guidelines. But the intent here was to get a lot more opening here, which we believed provided relief to the neighbor's property, maintained what to the best of our abilities. And we've tried to look at sightlines through all kinds of ways for views and considering shadows. We understand the preferences to not have a roof, but that roof has been approved since April twenty twenty one. And so that is why the staff recommendation was addressing it in a in a way about discretion from the owner.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
Thank you.
Okay. So we have Commissioner Reddick has a couple of questions.
Thank you, Chair Goran. Director Ikas, thank you for the time you've spent recapping the process to us. Could you tell us in in a little more detail what the the appeal opportunity was that existed after the most recent modifications and how that was noticed and what the what the what the time allowed for that is? And well, I'll, please go ahead if that's fine.
Hi, Winter, do you have that at your fingertips?
I can pull it up, the exact specifics, but I did want to jump in if that's okay. Just to clarify that the process that we provided, as as Jill mentioned, there was the original coastal development permit approval, which followed all the requirements of eighteen twenty sixty, I think, in terms of notice hearing opportunities for appeal. With a any major amendment to a CDP, you go back through that same process. But with minor amendments, there typically is no process, no notice, because they are by definition minor. And the process, of course, so there's no provision, one way or the other, about how to handle minor modifications. This is just part of the conditions of approval has been for a long time that staff is authorized to make minor modifications. So I just want to sort of start out by saying like the typical process for minor modifications is not to provide notice or go through the formal procedures and mechanisms that you would do for something that's, you know, getting the original CDP approval and a hearing and all of that. However, as Jill mentioned, we did when there was a lot of neighbor input about this proposed minor modification. about this uh proposed minor modification. Um, we did provide um uh we clarified that this wasn't required, but because we wanted to get everybody's inputs. Um, we did provide uh ten working days um to file an appeal. We provided the notice of um when the decision was issued and we did this to uh the immediate neighbors and any other party that had expressed interest. So it wasn't your standard, um, you know, three hundred foot radius. But again, this was a lot more process than um typically is provided in these, and it was really just out of consideration for the neighbors' um concerns and the back and forth that we had had. So and now Jill's pulled up the um the paragraph in the letter approving that prior modification that notified everyone of the appeal process.
Thank you. That's a that's great detail to to hear about. Um. I don't know if this is a clarifying question or not, and if if your judgment is that it's not, we defer it until later in the meeting. But I'm curious uh to know the 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 staff's view of sorting through the the making judgment on the major versus minor modification question.
I think we're ti- telling into our next agenda item, which is um understandable. Uh, yeah, so we're really mindful of the overall envelope of of development that is approved and um. I'm getting, I'm sorry, I'm getting some communication and I'm being requested to explain something to you. I'll I'll take a look at it in a minute. Um. And we we need to really understand if we're we're hitting any any thresholds. On, for example, uh a an increase of to an addition that is more than ten percent of what was approved. That's actually a threshold we use uh for uh determining whether or not a project is even subject to a coastal development permit. Um, assuming assuming there's no resources or any other um coastal kinds of concerns. Um, an existing single family home, if there's an addition to it that is uh less than ten percent of the floor area of of the home, um that's exempt from coastal development permit review. And this is the city's practice, and this is also consistent with um resources code that we have cited in some of the documents that you've received. So then we scale that down if we're looking at um the addition. So um if you have a two thousand square foot property and we're adding uh two hundred square feet to it or less, then it would be exempt. But let's say, let's say we're uh at that small house, a thousand square feet, added two hundred. Um, that would require such a permit. And then if the applicant decided they the two hundred square feet was less than they wanted and they were going to seek to uh go on another ten percent over what they added. Um, we would have to look at that as as potentially major because it, even though it's not very many square feet, it it starts to uh trip in term in terms of what we've already um put through a public process. Uh, so we scale that way. It's pretty conservative. Uh, we also uh try to make sure that the kinds of things that are really sensitive are like where window openings are. Um, es- especially in in fill development where uh have, you know, these homes don't conform to the design guidelines, as was already noted tonight. And so um it's possible that when they were originally developed, their their windows may or may not be offset from each other. But the new addition, um we we really look at that, or if windows are being added. Um, we look at how they they line up with the windows on adjacent houses to to the sides in particular. Uh, there's some attention paid to the rear, but the sides are really the most sensitive because the setbacks are are pretty small. Um. Large decks are are something that I I take almost all of them to hearings. And um we we benefit from doing that. We had one a few weeks ago um where the neighbor made a couple of suggestions about their preference for the railing and the height of it, and we had to be very careful about what what the compromise could be to ensure that it conforms to the design guidelines. So um if that one goes forward and there's modifications to that kind of negotiated condition, we'll be very concerned about that and and definitely uh get in touch with those neighbors and have to decide whether or not it is a major modification. I don't expect that to happen um because it was um a cordial discussion. And that's really the the thing that is so important is um setting the stage at the beginning of the approval um so that we really have a foundation for for the permit itself.
Through the chair, if I could jump in on Steve.
Um, Commissioner Minchin.
Sure, please do.
Turn about is fair play. So um to be to be clear, I understand these are the the objectives idea, the ten percent idea. If the house that was originally built was, let's say, had maxed out its floor area ratio under the building standards, and they wanted another ten percent, that would not be considered minor. Is that correct? Or would that be considered minor, but were less than ten percent?
I I misunderstood.
I think Jill, if I can jump in, I think I understood, and the answer is that would not be approvable because it would go beyond or it would require a variance or something, right? Because it would add on beyond the floor area ratio. So it's sort of a separate question then, um because it's really about whether it complies with the code at all. But um, yeah, so I don't know if that helps answer the question. It certainly wouldn't be considered minor because it would be inconsistent with the code.
Thank you. Yeah, so the question was if you were right at the FAR and someone proposed something less than ten percent. I didn't want to leave the public with the impression that we would turn a blind eye to the lack of performance with the FAR.
No, 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 no.
Or there was no no confusion about that.
No, we would um help our applicant conform to the code. And um if there was a desire to pursue something otherwise, um that's a variance, and that's going to the planning commission.
So uh for objective things like that, that's straightforward. Um, um, and I'm, I don't mean to suggest necessarily that that's the case, you know, that something like that is happening here. I think you would have flagged it if it were so. But um a- a- another or aspect of the public testimony we heard on this item was we didn't comment on the project when it was originally presented, so implicitly we're thinking it's okay. And then there were changes that we think are not okay, and they're kind of soft. But because we think they're not okay, the fact that we didn't comment initially is being used against us. Speaking colloquially for the public who's unhappy. And I'm trying to understand what the mechanism, if it's not this minor, you know, that this innovative thing of you have ten days to think about this, here's what we're doing. You know, for someone who maybe didn't even pay attention to this project, they would have had no concern, but are concerned about the project in its revised form. Um. We don't have a framework, as I as I understand it, for how to accommodate that. And I understand that's grist for the second topic, and yet it seems very relevant for this one, given the public testimony we've had. Do you have thoughts about that?
That's a little.
I I'm happy to weigh in just a little bit on that, and I think this kind of comes back around to sort of the scope of the question before you tonight. Um, and you know, we are starting from, as I think you pointed out, Commissioner Benjamin, a baseline of the um permit as approved um back in September. Um, and so I think the the questions before you are, you know, whether you're um interested in approving, uh denying, or conditionally approving the requested changes. Um, I think there could be a question, I suppose, of whether you agree with staff's recommendation to treat this as minor um versus major. And I think that the consequence from that uh from a process perspective um wouldn't be very different. A major, you know, you would, it would possibly delay this hearing uh and cost the applicant um additional funding for doing the new hearing and considering this a major amendment. Um, but uh in addition to that, um, you know, we're we are having a hearing on this minor modification now. So I think from a practical lens, treating it as a major modification um uh would not provide a tremendous difference in terms of process. Um, but it is a question that you could consider. If you disagree that these are minor modifications, you could deny them. Uh, or you could, and you could invite an application for a major amendment instead. So I I don't know if that helps put this in perspective in terms of what the commission is doing tonight.
Well, I think it does. I uh what was really a concern to me uh that motivated that question was some of the material we've received in testimony tonight and in the days running up to tonight suggested that it might be that the scope of the changes go roll back, that we should be considering, would roll back a little further than that time point. And so i- if we're defining that from whole cloth, that 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 we need to start at this point, there's not much more to say about it. But I do think I heard that in the public testimony, there were some who had reservations about that as the starting point. And I think it would be disingenuous of me not to acknowledge that I heard that. Thank you for the interruption.
Okay. So um so I personally, I appreciate all the process questions and the whole idea that you're moving toward um resolving this process issue. Um, I feel like this city has always had a very strong outreach process. But I I don't think that the outreach process is really what the the people here were concerned with. I think that the process that they were concerned with was more about um, you know, having a project be slightly changed and then slightly changed and then slightly changed and then slightly changed and changed and changed until it's not the same project. And so to me, when I look at this, the most important thing to me is when you guys found unpermitted development, what was that exactly? I don't understand. Can you explain that to me, first of all? What did you find that was unpermitted?
Sure. So there were a number of things. Um, I think the most significant was the one and a half foot extension of the um addition. Um. Increasing its length from twenty one and a half feet to twenty three feet. Uh. That was reviewed um kind of in a concurrent mode of when construction was going on to see if it if it conformed as uh to the code. And if it affected the CDP, it certainly is not something that we were, we were very displeased that this had occurred. Um.
And things, so that's the biggest?
That was, in my opinion, I I think that was the most significant thing because it's the footprint of the structure. Now, the second biggest thing was when uh the upper floor of the covered terrace, which is supposed to be substantially open was enclosed. And um that was something that, you know, we, I are, I would like to give our building official a moment to speak to um how these things are typically discovered through inspections.
I just want to know what's going on.
Okay, so it was enclosed. We uh heard about it and immediately that day inspected it and found that uh the concern was true. And um issued that a stop work direction so that nothing else could be added to that part of the of the structure while we were working out how how to address it.
So it was enclosed and it was a foot and a half longer or wider?
Longer.
Longer, that's what I thought. So and the when when other people have brought, this one woman earlier brought up footings that that the footings were different or something like that. Is that is that part of the one and a half foot longer? Is that what she's talking about?
Yes.
Okay, so with that one and a half feet longer, then it had different footings. So then it could be built as an enclosed structure, whereas before.
No.
Is that?
No, no, that didn't affect whether how the use of the structure, it just affected the footprint of of the structure. Um, these are different choices that were made along the way.
Okay. So so the 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 not, the unpermitted part was lengthening the the going beyond permit, uh one and a half feet and building a structure where it was supposed to be open. Is that right? Those are the two big things?
Pretty much. And then there were, there were um other things around the building on. They decided to remove a chimney and replace a fireplace with an electric fireplace. I mean, these are little things that are.
I looked at your report and it kind of looked like those were the two.
Mm-hmm.
Those are permitted. And so then.
So then we we got the plans to come in and conform, and we went through this very detailed process and provided this appeal period. And clearly, this is a one of a kind situation, and so we were trying to um work work some process into this to give people an opportunity to both comment and or appeal, should they wish to do so.
Uh, so um that's that's great. Um, but I guess the, so it's the root to me like outside looking in, I don't, I don't know for, you know, I'm just, I'm trying to get clarity. It seems like that's the the real issue is what was unpermitted. What was, what was, you know, there was something that was permitted, and then there was something that was added that was not okay, not legal. And that unpermitted part was then resolved in some way. But that I resolved was just like, okay, the city's saying, well, you did it, so we'll kind of work with you on modifying it and changing it and trying to get you to conform better to 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 be more in compliance than you are now. Is that, is that simplistic?
No, um.
Kind of like, that's kind of, because you know.
I think what's really challenging here, Chair Gorn, is that there are, this is, this is, was a really challenging project where on the work that was performed in advance of our our having a chance to review and approve it on didn't all happen at once. Um, it came in in different uh phases and each each of these occurrences has a different circumstance around it. In each case, we would have required removal if the if it was unsafe or if there was no chance that it could have been approved, if it didn't meet the code, if it wasn't going to be substantially in compliance with the permit that had already been issued for the CDP, et cetera. So I do want to reassure folks, if it if something had been built in the setback, we wouldn't have just stopped work. We would have stopped work and made it be abated. And um that didn't happen here. It was this series of things that might or might not be approvable and um weren't unsafe. And we were trying to get through process. So it's it's not simple. Um.
I get it.
Yeah, I know you do.
I appreciate the process stuff too, but again, like I don't really care about neighborhood input. Like, you know, like, okay, yes, it's important. I understand it's very important, and you solicit as much as you can. But really, what you what you've got is an unpermitted problem that you need to resolve so that it's, so that it meets.
Right, so we're trying to correct. Right. So we're trying to correct it through this process. That is why we elevated it to you at this point to have this excellent forum of the planning commission to, to address it. I, I want to say for the, um, good of this, uh, order here that I've been requested to clarify something by the neighbor that I do think is important. And if I could just have a moment to, uh, show you uh, something about the September approval. I mentioned it twice in my presentation, but I'm not sure if it was completely, uh, clear. So I'm going to.
Um, I guess the floor is yours.
Thank you. I just, um, I've been asked and you've been, um, actually emailed about this. So the, um, original coastal development permit approval included, um, what are called ridge skylights. So this is a series of skylights that, um, really sits on top of, of the ridge of this, uh, little pitched roof. And in fact is, um, I don't think I have the section. Anyway, that, that was the original approval. And then the building permit approval, um, the applicant decided that the ridge skylights were not their preference, um, for a number of reasons, uh, later in the process. So, uh, they instead created an opening in the roof. And so, um, you know, remembering that this is an outdoor space, this is almost like a skylight with no glass. And so it, both of these ideas, uh, design ideas affected the mass of the structure and, and provide a little articulation through the roof. And, um, so this one, um, in fact, kinda raised the ridge line, but gave you something to, assuming they're clear, that you might even be able to look through them a little bit. And then this actually lowered the ridge line for, for a span. So when the minor modification came in, um, it included, sorry, this is the one I didn't have ready, um. It included these two flat skylights instead of the ridge skylight or the, the notch, um, that created that, that opening. Um, and I didn't approve it this way. I approved it with the condition that, um, the, um, that roof be finished either this way with, with ridge skylights or this way with the notch, because those were two previously approved approaches and they both had articulation. And this, um, flatness was an issue and we were really trying to adhere to the design guidelines as best as we can. And in fact, there are design guidelines that relate to roof massing and skylights. So there is, um, some logic behind that and it's documented in our, uh, my approval letter. And I was asked to show that to you because I, I don't have a drawing of that. And that was where I have that little note in my presentation that it wasn't approved just like this. So I hope that was satisfactory to the neighbor. This is why the applicant presented to you about skylights.
So, um, if I'm, if I'm understanding right, the, what you're asking us to, um, to approve does not have that big enclosed area, that it still retains that open area that was originally approved. Is that right? No, that's not right. Explain. I just wanna understand.
No, I know. I'm sorry. And I, I have a, um, a significant amount of things going on in the background here. And it's, it's, um, I'm, I'm, at some point I'm gonna need a little water break if that's okay. So, um, let's get back to your question. I apologize. Maybe winter is, is ahead of me and can cover it. Yeah, I think, I.
I don't seem to be getting like, like a answer. So I don't, um, I'm, um,
So I, I, I think I could answer it, which is no. Uh, the applicant has proposed some minor modifications. So the, the version that Jill just had up on the screen that had the little human behind the half wall and the opening between the existing house and the back, that's what's been approved. Um, as Jill was just explaining. And the proposed modification is to not have the person standing, you know, behind the half wall, but instead enclose that space that's closest to the existing house, make it conditioned space and have kind of that balcony at the back. And so those are the general requests for modifications and the, um, applicant has made these requests. And staff has, uh, made a recommendation, uh, that they would approve those requests with some modifications, including, um, uh, changing the ratio of enclosed to open space.
Okay. So that is right. Uh, Commissioner Benjamin, I'm gonna pass it off to you for a minute.
Thank you. Catch your breath. I need that too. So one of the, one of the questions that, one of the questions that, uh, I think is, you know, we, we're talking about the footings earlier and the foot and a half, and I think I heard, uh, Jill suggesting a segue to, to our building official, um, to help us understand how we would normally, you know, I, I've had a few permits that I've handled on my own. And I noticed when I turn the form over and I look on the back, there's a place where the building official approves the form, uh, for the footings or, and you get an okay to pour. And in my naive understanding, um, that would be a place that our building official would look and say, hey, that footing is too long. Would that happen or how would it happen? I guess is the, is the right way to think about that. And welcome, by the way.
Uh, thank you. Good evening. Uh, so yes, typically when we show up for an inspection, it's at the request of the contractor, the homeowner. So in this situation, we're speaking about the forms. The forms were the same dimension because they're supporting the same size structure. It was just elongated by a foot and a half. And the form was reviewed by the inspector. It matched the approved plan as far as the reinforcement, the depth and the width. And then it was caught afterwards, unfortunately, that it was eighteen inches longer. So the focus was on the form to support the structure and that eighteen inches was not looked at, at that time.
Okay. In a perfect world, that's when we would have caught it would be, hey, the forge too long, everything else is nice, but the form is too old. Thank you.
So Jill, you squared away? Everything okay?
Yeah.
I have, I have questions about the skylights too, but I don't know if you wanna go there or go somewhere else.
No, that's fine. But, um, um, let me open it up to Commissioner Riddick and then we'll get back to that. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Gorn. Um, again, I'm not positive if this is a truly a clarifying question. And if it's not, I'll defer it to later. But the, the, the products of this for me is kind of feels like it boils down to the, the modifications we're asked to approve tonight do include several incidents of non-conformance with the residential, uh, design guidelines. And I understand as Vice Chair Hernandez reminded us, the guidelines are guidelines and there may be reasonable deviations from what's set forward there. But it would help me to, to hear staff explain why the, the, what the deviations are and why they're reasonable ones.
Sure, um. We were really trying to find us an improved outcome for all interested parties. And because the de- design guidelines allow for some discretion, we believe that it was acceptable to consider that. Um, and I do wanna be clear, I, I, I was, I noted it in the staff report. This is not something that we were, um, hiding at all. Um, we, we explained, the position of the staff recommendation to pull that wall back to be more conforming with the twenty-five foot wall plane guideline than, um, what is proposed with, with, um, the applicant's modification. Um, but that it was still, um, exceeded twenty-five feet by, by a few feet. Um, the planning commission has all discretion around that. Um, I don't know if the applicant will proceed with the project if, um, if they have, uh, less space uh, than, than what they're proposing. I'm not sure if they would accept it with the staff recommendation or if they would accept it with, um, even less space than that. What they have right now is an approved permit that you have looked at, which is from September. And it complies and it was, um, documented. And it conforms to the guidelines and the zoning. And so this is a special circumstance, um, where we're asking for your, uh, judgment. Um, there's, there's some gray area here and we, we are being, uh, forthcoming about that. Um, it's hard to tell right now what, what is the best outcome based on the public comment that we've heard. And, um, we're really mindful about that and, um, really heartened by the, the neighbors' comments and concerns about our process because we take it very seriously. And, um, try to be incredibly careful. So this is, uh, why we're here really is, is this kind of, uh, discretion that I, I think goes beyond what, what staff should be doing.
So again, just to be clear, we're talking about making an exception for that one and a half feet that they built, that, that was not permitted. And then making sure that the space above remains open and not enclosed, even though we're talking about a partially enclosed space under, up there. That, that it maintains that what was permitted at the time, which is this open deck.
Uh, so if I could just clarify, the one and a half feet is not on the table. That has been approved as a minor amendment by, uh, the director. So that is not something that's up for, for the planning commission to consider now. The, the two options that are on the table are denying the minor modifications, which would leave you with the more open unconditioned space on that second floor and the openings that Jill pointed out. Um, and the, um, you know, either ridge skylights or that, or the notch, that would be the result of denying. It would be sticking with the, um, the plans as they were approved in September. Or, um, granting the minor modifications that would, um, get rid of the openings, make some of the space conditioned and have that back terrace. So the, I just wanted to be clear, the one and a half feet, that's not, um, that, that's.
Debate at all.
Yeah.
So really all we're talking about then is design modifications to this place that they wanna enclose, that the neighbors want to remain, that, that the city wants to remain open, right? So, um, those, I mean, when it boils down to, if that's really what it boils down to, that seems really minor.
Well, and I, I will just add, I, I'm not totally sure that, uh, we understand exactly which is preferred by the neighbors. So really this is, you know, take everything into consideration that you have heard, of course, all the evidence in the record. But, um, basically I think it's, the, the question is really the applicant has requested these changes. Staff has recommended, uh, approving the changes with some, uh, changes to the changes, some modifications. And that's kind of the, what's being presented to you.
Right. But those modifications are to say you can't have this enclosed, fully enclosed space.
And that's. It's, you can have it, but it has to be smaller.
Right.
Did I get that right, Joe?
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
So as a planning commission, really we should be looking at what is allowable, not so much what, I mean, you know, you are working out with the homeowner and the neighbors, what type of structure would work best. But it seems kind of micromanaging for planning commission to, to do that. It, what am I, am I misunderstanding?
I don't think you are. The planning commission, um, but I, I will say the planning commission has design review authority over, uh, this permit at this point. And these are, these are design elements. Um, staff initially, um, conducted the design review. Um, but now, now it's, now it's for you. Uh, but just for this portion of the project, the rest of the matter is, is really settled. And we want to stay focused on, on, on the portion that's before you.
Right. Thank you. Um, Commissioner Benjamin?
Yeah, so I, 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 I got it. I got the message loud and clear about what, you know, where the, where the degrees of freedom are that are, you know, uh, that you explained are within our sort of daily work. I think it's important to contrast that with some of the requests that we see in public comment that have to do with, you know, removing the roof altogether or things that don't sound like either of the options that we've been talking about. But I do wanna note for the record that, you know, it's been suggested by some of the, some of the testimony, written testimony we've received, that they'd like us to consider that. And I'm, through your message of, of what our process is, the word is, that's not on the table. So I wanna be really public and make sure all my colleagues are tuned in to what, what we've heard from the public, where we feel, where we got it in our legal advice here about what's on the table for us to work on and what's not. Um, and to me, that's significant. I wanted to clarify about the skylights if I could, and I, I'll try to be very brief. So we saw two pictures of articulated, of articulation, one with the notch, uh, and one with the ridge skylights. And, um, could you just remind us what the applicant's preferences were with respect to skylights? It was neither of those?
That's correct. That's correct. Um, so their preference, um, which, this is the minor modification, um, the conclusion of the September permitting with the skylights that they preferred relative to how this was actually approved. Now the item before you tonight, um, which has the, um, enclosed space with the, uh, more open terrace section. In this, uh, plan, they are showing those original flat skylights. I really didn't focus on skylights for this particular design because, um, staff's focus here was on openness. But, um, so you basically have three different kinds of skylights that have been thought about for this project.
And you're leaning towards the ridge or the cut, the cutback?
I required it for this approval. Um, I really don't have a preference for this. I, my, I don't have the version here. Um, the preference for, do you see that?
I do.
Did that work? Okay. Um, the focus, staff's focus here was getting relief, as much open transparency as possible. relief, as much open transparency as possible beyond articulation. We were, that was what was the emphasis.
Okay, I get that. Now, and if if the planning commission were to say, let's go with expanding the open space, you know, to the, what is that, to the south? With the additional pickets that are in the red circle. Does that inform your thinking about how the skylight should work?
You know, that's on the table for you to consider. You've seen three different versions and if you
All of them are compatible with that change. Those could be messed with independently.
I think it's fair. Your applicant spoke to you about the skylights earlier. These are the ones that they wanted and that's what they proposed.
Okay, I understand. I didn't mean, okay, I'm okay with that particular design. I mean, I think I get it. There was also a dialogue about the gutters and LID, you know, best practices, just to shift the focus a little bit. And I want to be sure that there, that I understand what, if any, degrees of freedom are associated with tonight's decision with respect to that, because that did come up in common, a concern that maybe the there was a drainage issue. You know, reading between the lines, it sounded like maybe they thought there could be a gutter going into the vegetated area, but she could take it right back out to the gutter and curb as opposed to having it contained. Can you help me understand whether that's part of tonight's decision or that's also cut and dry from earlier?
Well, the drainage was approved to have the drainage go into vegetated areas. And Mike, I don't know if you were involved in the inspection for that, but the city engineer reviewed it and it was it was a modification to the building permit plans that we required because originally the proposed drainage was to have it go out to the street gutter and we don't allow that. So I I don't, I didn't assume that was a matter at hand because the drain, the site drainage would not change for this proposal.
Yeah, it was in conversation. I just didn't want to, I didn't want to omit it from conversation, but I think I'm clear that that's not I I think that that's been dry, if you'll pardon the mixture of metaphors. And I'm okay with that. So I'll catch my breath and leave it back to one of my other colleagues. Thank you.
Commissioner Reddick.
Thank you. Jill, I'm I'm wondering if you might have in slide form the six conditions that are on page one of your staff report, because I think I think that will focus us specifically on what it is the commission is being asked to approve. That is, the being asked to approve the applicant's proposed modifications with with these six conditions.
Yes, I think, whoops. I think I have five. Hang on.
Yeah, the six was spilled over to the second page. Or to the next page.
Yes.
Oh, okay. Hold on. All right, so the recommendation is on two pages. And it's documenting, this first part is documenting the area of question, which is this rear addition, the second story. And explaining the intended use. And then the conditions, the first two are actually all about that moving the wall back so that the open portion of the terrace is larger than as proposed. And with our recommendation, it would be fifty-fifty to provide some architectural balance. And so one of the conditions is about floor area and then to be redundant, because I think it's important. We also looked at the wall length. But these two things are requiring kind of the same thing. Then the skylights are addressed only, I only noted their location. This is an area for you to consider about what type. But if you pull that wall back, the skylights would need to be retreated to the south. They would not look look right nor I think they'd be out of balance with where where they're positioned. The roof comment. Staff believes that this would be a better design if there wasn't a roof over the open terrace area, but the roof is already approved. And so that is why we presented this condition in this way. This is very important, the the final condition here in terms of what the railing material is. The whole intent to have transparency would be really defeated if solid half walls were the railing material for for the open terrace. So we don't think there's one perfect answer. It's very nice to reuse material that was already on the house and that was that picket style railing. Should that not be reused, glass panels work, cable railings work. Note that we say clear panels. We don't want to have opaque glass panels. And we've actually stated in both the negative and the positive, what we don't want and what we recommend.
And then there was one more bullet.
You know, I feel like I lost it. Let me, I'll stop sharing and try to retrieve it. I don't know what happened to it.
It has to do with the rear north elevation.
Oh, yes, thank you.
And the the structural elements in the rear elevation be reduced in area to to make the north elevation more open and transparent at the discretion of the applicant?
Yeah, the, sorry about that. I I dropped that one. That one similarly to Let me, I'm going to show you this elevation so you'll be able to visualize it. Okay. So our understanding of this back elevation, that the neighbor to the north this is one of those cases where everyone has a different preference. The neighbor to the north preferred a solid deck sighting here. So that is why this is shown this way. And then this element, this vertical element here, I my understanding is that it's structural and it's already it's already been constructed this way and it was it was approved this way originally. It would be nice if this wasn't so bulky. I'm not sure if it can be modified. And so that was the intent of that discretionary condition.
Well, thank you for recapping that. That helps me focus specifically on what we're being asked to to make judgments about.
Maybe you could speak a moment to the fact that we're not sort of setting a new, you know, resetting the goalposts each time that there was approval originally, and then there was a new approval, and then there was a new approval, which is one of the concerns that the neighbors have voiced. Sorry, I'm losing my voice. But so I
That's why we're here. You know, anyone who's had a coastal development permit approved, whether they built the project or not can come back and have a project change. The the matter is, how is it processed? And we've brought it to you to have real clarity about the status and the final outcome in a public forum. So this is the it's it's not about edging the goalposts anywhere at this point. This is this is a project a portion of a project, frankly, that you are, you're looking at.
Winter.
Thanks. I I just wanted to clarify one comment I made earlier when I believe it was can't remember who asked the question about what was the difference between deciding this as a minor modification and a major modification? One additional change is the scope of the notice provided. So if this were handled as a major modification, there would be the newspaper notice and the notice individual notice to people within three hundred feet. Since this is a minor modification that wasn't required and instead we did our sort of minor plus noticing of giving notice to all the immediate neighbors and interested parties. So I did just want to clarify that is a difference between handling it one way or the other.
Yeah, I see Hernandez.
As always, very informative discussion. I'm curious what the applicant's view, because there's there's three things we can do. We can reject the project altogether and send it back as and if it come to us as a major project. We can approve the original project. The applicant has submitted something city staff have concerns with. And so I think the third thing on the table is moving forward to the city's recommendation, which I think is pretty pretty well defined. I haven't heard the applicant express an opinion on that. And so I'm through the chair. I'd be curious to hear what the applicant's perspective is on either what I listed as the second option or the third option, which is go back to the original permitted the original permit or go to staff's recommendation as we've discussed this evening. Would that be okay to get the applicant's perspective, Chair Gorn?
I think that would be fine. Yes.
A point of order, point of order, Commissioner Chair Gorn, if you can't speak, I suggest you relinquish the chair while you get your voice back.
Yeah, I actually was going to ask if we could have Vice Chair Hernandez take over in the second half.
You're a tough guy.
So could we do that? I don't know if that's okay, but I would like to do that. Laurie Ellington, speak.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah. Go ahead, Laurie, you can unmute. There you go. Hi, thank you so much. Just so I see Chair Hernandez. I just, I want to answer your questions one at a time so it doesn't get lost. Just just so we kind of stay in order. So what was your first question?
So the staff has made a recommendation on your new proposal. And they said, okay, the applicant has said, we're going to do these things. City staff has said, well, to be more conforming with the guidelines, the the residential design guidelines, it should have these elements and they're 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 pretty well defined. Are you comfortable with those recommendations from city staff, or would you rather go back to the original permit?
So the city staff was the one that recommended that the terrace be at the tail end. And we thought that was a brilliant idea and and we really loved it and breaking down the walls and and putting in the transparency of railings. Really, really liked that idea that the city staff proposed to us. And so we changed our plans to modify that. In the sense of their and and so we did that for the help of addressing outer concerns. So we implemented that plan. What I think your question is, is so they're saying, yeah, we can do this conditioned space, but we don't want it to be as 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 large as the applicant is requesting. So I think your question to me is, how do I feel about that? Or how do we feel about that? And what would we do? Is that correct?
I I'm asking you, there's there are three questions, I think, three possible options. One is we reject the project altogether. Two, and it comes back as a major project. Two, we approve, we we just say, hey, we're going to stick with the original approved project from September. Or three, and and maybe my colleagues disagree, but I've heard concerns from the neighbors about the mass and bulking and you know, there's there's a mixture of opinions here. But I'm interpreting that the city staff recommendation is what we're all sort of possibly leaning towards. And so once that's approved, I I think you're not going to have a lot of leeway on this project, would be my my what I think this, everybody's very concerned about making sure we get to something that's more workable than what folks are seeing today when they look at where your project is physically. So are you comfortable with what's being proposed by city staff? That's my question, the the recommended proposal by city staff.
So my husband says the hundred percent yes. And, you know, I I will definitely refer to him. My only concern with that is, is that there are structural elements by moving that way back to what the city is recommending, how that affects us financially and and underneath construction that has already been conducted since we don't have engineered drawings. So those are my concerns. I would definitely, you know, like I said, we were really open to everything the city has recommended. And in our proposal, in our letter to you, that was our concern. And that we still are allotted. I know the Chair Commissioner said, but what is allowed? And we're we're thirty-three square feet under our allotted conditioned space. So that's, I don't know if that answered your question, if that just made it more confusing.
I I think you've, I think you've given me the information I need. So that that's that's it. Thank you. Chair Gorn?
Yeah, so I I kind of think when going to the applicant is, I think originally was more about if they're really not comfortable with stack recommendation, we could go back to original permit. And really, that's your choice.
We're comfortable. I I just want to stick with my husband. We're comfortable.
Good. Thank you.
Okay.
I think that was the question more than
Yeah.
What don't you like?
Well, it's these processes are are a challenge. We're a pickle. Would you like me to?
I mean, honestly, when you
Would you like to finish this this item?
When we first brought it up, I thought, well, now we have to have the other side also talk about what they like and don't like. And it's like, okay.
Well, I mean, yeah.
Let's move along. I think we got to move along. Yes, Commissioner Benjamin.
Yeah, just, I I appreciated that this was within the FAR. I think that was the applicant's last comment. I I do feel like the balance of conditioned and unconditioned space that would result from that extra conditioned area has a design impact that's undesirable. I I much prefer to have it, you know, honestly, it could be even more in conditioned space, but if you know, staff has worked hard to try to produce an outcome and I hear my colleagues, it sounds like they're converging towards that approach. I'm okay with it. I do wish that we, you know, in our next topic, we'll spend some more time thinking about other I do wish that we, you know, in our next topic, we'll spend some more time thinking about other approaches. You know, how we can avoid getting here in the future. That's what that's about. But I, you know, I I think that the fifty fifty is much better than the the applicant's perspective on the conditioned and unconditional space in my distinguished taste.
Right.
So, yeah, I'm ready to finish.
Can I make a motion?
Vice Chair Hernandez.
I'd like to make a mo, I'd like to make a motion to approve the project before us with the staff recommendations.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Thinking. Yes.
Commissioner, sorry, Commissioner Riddick?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hernandez?
Yes.
And Chair Gorn?
Thinking. Yes, please.
Motion approved, four zero.
Can we take a short break? And then when we come back, can Vice Chair Hernandez run the second half of this meeting? Thank you. We're going to take about ten minutes. So when are we back at ten o'clock? I can't hear anything. Why can't I hear anything?
Because I'm not speaking. My iPad likes to follow me around, so as I move the camera, it automatically adjusts. It's too fancy. It's distracting.
So you guys, I don't know how you want to do this, but I'm really sick. Like, I'm like, I have a really high fever. I'm like, I should
Do you want to just, if you want to just step out for the rest of the meeting, that's perfectly fine. We have quorum.
So I definitely, I need to do that. Should we reconvene and then I do that or shall?
Yeah. Why don't we just, why don't we just reconvene and just so everybody's here and then we can transition up? Yeah.
Lay out, dude. Feel better.
Yeah, thanks. I'm actually a lot better. I'm not kidding.
Comedy is someone else's misfortune.
This is, yeah. This is why I know.
This latest, this latest plague is very bad. Just letting, it's rough.
So Bridget, I think we're going to, I'm going to go ahead and take over his chair for the rest of the meeting. And then when Commissioner Riddick gets back, we're just going to officially do that and then
He's here.
I'm back.
Excellent.
Bridget, can we reconvene?
Yes.
Pass it over.
Okay, you guys can start.
So we're back. We're reconvening, reconmission meeting for whatever, this is November twenty-second. I I am sick. I'm going to step out. I am going to pass the pass the gavel, such as it is, to Vice Chair Hernandez. And he is going to run things from here. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair Gorn, and I thank you for your perseverance through this evening, making sure we had quorum.
I was trying to be patient. It was really hard.
Feel better. So I believe the next item on the agenda is consider the staff report and public comments and hold a discussion on the existing administrative oversight for minor and ministerial amendments to the coastal development permit process. Jill, do you want to lead us in this effort?
So Winter's going to start and I'll get the presentation going for her. And then I will share a few things at the end. Oops, I forgot to. My apologies.
You can see your screen.
I know. How's that?
Very good.
Okay.
Thank you, Jill. Thank you, Planning Commission. It's a rare treat that I get to present on any of these agenda items. I was thinking I'm like Ringo Starr where they only let him sing one song on every record, so.
All right, Ringo.
You've got a new nickname.
So anyway, I am going to kick us off here because a lot of what's in the staff report is kind of going over the legal process we already follow and what's in the code and what's in our standard conditions of approval for coastal development permits, which I'll probably slip into the shorthand of calling CBPs and then major and minor amendments. So in terms of the preservation, this is kind of the overview, what we have up here. I'll provide some background. I'll talk about the different types of amendments. And then I will hand it over to Jill to talk about what staff's recommending in terms of possible changes or improvements to the process for handling minor CDP modifications. And then we will look forward to hearing from the public on this topic. And then Planning Commission, you know, clarifying questions, discussion and deliberation. And so as this body well knows, coastal development permits are required for most types of development in Half Moon Bay because we're in the coastal zone. And the process for that governs the issuance of CDPs is in chapter eighteen point twenty of the municipal code. And in that section of the code, there are provisions that talk about who issues coastal development permits. And in general, it's either this body, the Planning Commission, or the Community Development Director. And the the code actually talks about the director referring applications for CBPs either to the Planning Commission or retaining the the CDP for the director to decide on. And most CDPs do end up before the Planning Commission. This is basically all CDPs for complex projects or projects where there's some other approval that's required, like a use permit or a variance or a parking exception. And primarily, the planning director, if she's going to process a coastal development permit, it will mostly be additions to existing single-family homes and administrative approvals for accessory dwelling units, ADUs. And then sometimes the director will handle a single family, a new single-family home if it's fairly uncomplicated and uncontra, non-controversial. And and so when a new CDP is issued, there's a provision in the municipal code. Again, that talks about the notice that's provided. The note, and this is in your staff report as well, the notification includes at least two site postings, notification when the application for the CDP is received and then notification of a public hearing. And this is true regardless of who is issuing the CDP, whether that's the director or the Planning Commission. These notice requirements are followed. And then in addition to the site posting, there are public hearing notice. There are mail notices to property owners and residents within three hundred feet of the project boundary and then publish notice in the local newspaper. And we have some information in the staff report about the cost of the these notification procedures in part because we we want to, we wanted to sort of ground this discussion and some practicalities. And I think, you know, it is important to know not only what potential additional notice or process could be followed, but also what the sort of price tag is for that, both in terms of dollars and time and staff time as well. So you'll see there's probably more detail about dollar amounts than usual in our staff reports in there. But we wanted a full picture since we're going to be explaining sort of when there's extra notice, when there's just, you know, when it's a minor amendment, when there's less notice and and kind of have all those considerations in front of you. Um, okay. I do have a little bit more to say before I get into the types, but that's okay. We can, either one is fine. If the director makes the decision on the CDP, that's appealable to the Planning Commission. If the Planning Commission makes it, it's appealable to the city council. And then sometimes the Coastal Commission will have appealed jurisdiction depending on where the CDP is issued. And then the next thing I wanted to touch on briefly, which is really just the the process for modifying a CDP. And I wanted to just say, and I think probably Jill might have more background on this if she wants to weigh in. But, you know, I think the, some of the questions we saw from public comments on this agenda item and the last one was sort of like, why do people modify a CDP? And like, shouldn't they just follow the approved plans? And so, you know, we just wanted to note that modifications to CDPs after they're approved, but once construction is sort of underway, is quite common. CDPs are approved before construction drawings are complete. And sometimes, you know, something new is discovered at that point. Sometimes there are supply chain issues and like a slightly different window is available than was anticipated on the plans. And, you know, sometimes, sometimes there are just changes that might, that have very little impact on the design, on the structure. But that would help either the applicant or the the neighbors or whoever in some way. So so I think the main point here and is just that this is quite common. It's not, so if if there are going to be changes to the way that staff handles minor modifications, we should just all be aware that that's going to have a pretty major impact on staff workload and and other things because these are fairly common requests. So the code says at section eighteen twenty eighty-five, and I guess, and I know this is in the staff report as well, that an application for an amendment to a CDP shall be accomplished in the same manner specified by this chapter for the original approval of the CDP. However, since nineteen ninety-six, staff and the Planning Commission have included a standard condition of approval when issuing CDPs that basically says, you know, for very minor changes, for minor amendments, the planning director has the authority to process those without bringing every tiny little thing back to the Planning Commission. The the standard condition of approval doesn't have any real detail about how staff is supposed to determine between major and minor amendments. And here on this slide, we basically just have the three different kinds of amendments or modifications that that sometimes arise. And of course, major amendments, they do require basically a restarting of the process. They have to be handled the same way as the original CDP. Minor and ministerial don't. Minor modifications require staff to basically determine that these are minor. And we'll get into how staff has been doing that over the last while, a long time. And then ministerial are basically modifications of elements of a project that would be exempt from CDP oversight anyway. So CDPs, even though they are required for lots of activity, they're not required for every single thing and there are some exemptions. So that's what a ministerial modification would just refer to. Modifications that don't really touch on anything that would have required a CDP in the first place. Okay, so how has staff determined what type of modification? They're they're presented with something, a change to a plan, a proposed change to the CDP. And really, the the, these are the questions that staff asks to determine if the changes are major and thus would require the whole new process and going back to the Planning Commission. So the first possible threshold is intensity of use. This is primarily for mixed use and commercial developments. If a change would affect the intensity of the use or significantly alter the operational characteristics of the development. So this doesn't really come up with residential typically. This is more for mixed use and commercial. But if there is this change in use, and again, this really keys back to when CDPs are required, what counts as development? And if there's an intensification of use, that would be considered a major amendment. The second criteria is development size. And this is, you know, if there's a proposal to increase the size of development, development by more than ten percent. So that would be, you know, ten percent of the original approval or ten percent of the addition. If it was just a CDP for an addition, then, and this is ten percent of floor area, then that would be considered a major amendment and would have to go through the original CDP process with all the notice and the hearing, et cetera. And exceptions and variances, if a modification would result in the need for an exception or a variance, that's treated as major. And then findings and conditions of approval. This is where staff goes through and says, okay, you know, were we relying on the project looking one way or having certain elements in order to make the findings or conditions of approval for the original CDP? If you're trying to change something that was, you know, supporting these findings or conditions of approval, that would typically be considered major. And then Coastal Commission comments. Sometimes staff or the city will get comments on a project from the Coastal Commission. And if the modification, the proposed modification would affect the project's consistency with those comments or otherwise kind of undermine our, the city's response to those comments, then that modification would likely be considered major. Uh, next slide. Okay, so I think I've brought us up to, this is sort of, and that last slide was, I think, kind of the meat of it. This is how staff has been processing or determining whether a CDP modification is major or minor. And so these standards that staff have been following, they are the the process and the protocols that staff has been using for a long time. So it's not at all the case that staff is just making these decisions willy-nilly. They're applying this process. However, these standards aren't written up. They are not in a, they aren't, you know, in a memo format. And so we're hoping by bringing this up tonight for the Planning Commission discussion, this will help sort of daylight what that process is. Um, this will help sort of daylight what that process is that, um, staff has been following uh, in implementing those conditions of approval that grant the director discretion to process minor modifications. So in the process of thinking about this and putting this together, staff has come up with a couple of ideas uh, for, um, enhancing or modifying those protocols that, um, we hope will provide um, better, more information early on, um, for, um, for neighbors to have a better sense of when they might want to be involved um, in projects or other members of the community. And so I think I'll turn it over to Jill now to talk about, um, what staff's recommending and then also to, um, talk through what some of the other members of the public have suggested as, um, possible changes to the process.
Thanks, Winter. Um, so in your staff report, uh, we put forth, uh, two recommendations that we think would be, um, easy to at least, uh, one of them just try, which would be an enhanced site posting. Uh, this would be for, um, when we, uh, receive an application or notice for a public hearing, um, right now the notices, um, look like this. And, um, this is, you know, meant to hopefully uh, reach out and connect with anybody who's walking a dog in the neighborhood and they can see that there's something going on. Um, but it's all words and it's on a little stick. And so it's, it's not, um, maybe as much information as somebody might, um, stop and and take a look at it. So we're suggesting, uh, that we're gonna give a try adding, um, some, uh, reduced, um, sized elevations of, um, which are the, you know, what the building, um, proposed, uh, project would look like and a site plan, not the whole set of plans, but just just a few, a few graphics. Uh, most people respond more to graphics and pictures than they do to a, um, detailed description about square footage and where it's all gonna go. So we would add that to the, um, the posting and we will kind of keep track and see if people notice it and if it's helpful. Um, we also, um, received a suggestion about making sure the city engineer is involved, um, for certain kinds of modifications. And in my opinion, um, that should include any change in impervious surface area and, um, not just talking about increases, but, um, um, if it's moving around, it it really matters and makes a big difference with a drainage system. So, uh, your staff report includes, um, some strike through underlying of our standard condition of approval about modifications and brings the city engineer into it, um, regarding this topic as as a suggestion for your um, consideration and discussion. Now, uh, we also, uh, received, as as Winter noted, some additional suggestions and, um, they came in today and, uh, I spent as much time as I could with them. I do have some initial, uh, thoughts about, uh, some of them. I've actually used some of these before and, um, we'd like to share with you what, um, some ideas about incorporating them or or not, but why? So, uh, the first one was, uh, to have, uh, the applicant, uh, can be required to conduct neighborhood outreach. And it's a, it's, it's great, it's really nice. I actually, um, implemented this in the last city where I worked. Um, we currently, what we do is we encourage applicants to do this um, with all of their adjacent property owners as well as folks across the street. Um, in the case where you're requiring it, um, typically you'll have, uh, the applicant walk around the neighborhood with a reduced set of plans and try to get the neighbors to look it over and talk to them about it or drop it in their mailbox and then sign the plans so that you know that it's actually happened, um, with with the correct set of documents. I will tell you that, um, there's some challenges with this, um, method. I I definitely had folks, uh, fake, uh, the notification. Um, I mostly that doesn't happen, but it it can. Um, but also, there's also the challenge where, uh, neighbors refuse to comment or sign. And so then that puts the burden on the applicant where they just can't, they can't accomplish this. So we suggest, um, continuing to encourage this and adding uh, something on our application form about it to, um, really daylight just how important, um, working with your neighbors is. I mean, this is something that I always talk to our applicants about at our director hearings, which is to be really sensitive to your neighbors, especially during construction. And so this is absolutely, um, in theme with how we try to practice. Um, but I'll, I'll tell you, I think, I think our site posting and enhancing that is going to, um, be be the best way to accomplish this and it will reach more neighbors, um, than just the adjacent ones. So, um, this is our suggestion for for how to, um, uh, take on this, this, um, idea here. Uh, this one is about, uh, sending postcards, um, to the three hundred foot radius for minor modifications. Um, it's, this is a lot to do for minor modifications. I, I am concerned about it. Uh, generally, um, we wouldn't see this to be necessary. Clearly in the item that we just considered, we brought it to you so, because it it was important to do so. Um, but we want to remind everybody that if if the threshold to a major modification occurs, it's all of, all of the notice for, um, the standard CDP occurs. Um, and it goes to a public hearing. Um, we also are really aware of our record when we have our own, um, director or and by the way, this, this also applies to your decisions. Staff is implementing, uh, the planning commission's approved CDPs as well as the ones that we we take care of as staff. And, um, we, we go back and look at your minutes and really think about your discussion um, around, um, your, your various, uh, projects. Uh, so for example, if somebody was going to change events and we knew that it was really important for screening or for noise abatement, that isn't gonna happen. Um, we were aware of of the record. I see there's a, it's okay, we can take a midstream question, I'm happy to do that.
Thank you, it was just a point of order that we need to extend the meeting. We're from our deadlock. Move to extend to eleven thirty.
Ready, good, seconds. Um, I can do a quick roll call. Uh, Commissioner Benjamin?
Yes.
Commissioner Reddick?
Yes.
Um, Commissioner Gossett? She's on here. Don't know if she's unmuted. Yeah. Oh. I don't know if she's approving that we're extending.
I'm gonna ask her to unmute.
Okay. There you go.
Yes.
Okay, there's that. And Acting Chair Hernandez. And he's muted.
I.
Okay.
Motion approved to extend the meeting to eleven.
Thank you, Jimmy, for not letting us, uh, run out of, run amok here.
And I'm, I'm getting to the end here, but, um, I'll, I'll try to go quickly. I will note, we will, we will continue to think about this, um, but I, I actually think that the threshold, um, between a major and minor modification may be more important than um, having to work notice into all of these minor modifications. It is a lot of work to add to what we're doing. Um, there are a couple more. Uh, conformance with residential design guidelines or minor amendments. Uh, the idea here is that any minor amendment would need to fully conform to the design guidelines. Um, it's, that's a tough one because, um, for additions, it's, this is hard where we have existing development that does not conform to the guidelines as it is. And we are trying to steer additions and remodels to better conform. Um, and certainly we, we are, are trying to, uh, check every box that we can in that, in those guideline books. But I'm concerned that this might reduce the flexibility that we might need for some certain existing conditions. Certainly for new construction, um, this is, um, treated as absolutely necessary. And you get all those findings when we, um, give you re- your reports and your resolutions. Um, after the fact revisions disqualified as minor. Um, it's, it's really important for us to reiterate that, um, we have no intent of rewarding the bad behavior of, um, building first and then, um, asking for forgiveness. This is, uh, a matter where, uh, development that moves forward outside the realm of the permit, if it if it is not potentially approvable, it needs to be abated. It's hard for us to inspect, um, on a constant basis. Inspectors are called out at different milestones along the way when projects are underway. And so they aren't always able to tell when, um, different kinds of things might be happening, um, at uh, some less visible part of a property, even if they're, um, conducting an inspection elsewhere in a neighborhood. So it's, it's a tricky matter. Um, we're, you know, we just were, uh, given this one today and, um, certainly are, are, are thinking it through and appreciate your input about it. Finally, um, this is, I, I think really important and Winter, um, alluded to it, um, that well, she, she noted that we, we really don't have documentation about all the things that we try to do, um, when we're um, looking at building permit plans to make sure that they conform to the coastal development permit. Staff spends a lot of time with this process that we call plan check. And plan check is conducted by all the different, um, uh, specialties. So the engineering staff reviews building permit plans. Uh, planners review the plans. Obviously, the building, um, plan checker reviews them. They go to the water district, they go to the fire district. And, um, a, a lot goes into this. And the, the thresholds that, uh, Winter reviewed and that I I wrote about in the staff report can be memorialized. And I think that's what we were really being asked to do with this, this particular suggestion. And we think it's a great idea. We had hoped that your staff report and this meeting in and of itself would elevate the topic and, um, serve, um, that purpose to some extent. Um, we would not encourage a code amendment. Um, instead, we would, uh, think of a follow-up memo from this meeting. Um, we'd be happy to create a handout that is for the counter and posted on the website. Um, we could do more updates to conditions of approval. I haven't had enough time to think that through, but I, I think those first two things would at least get applicants better informed. And, uh, we would be very comfortable doing those things. Um, we're really at the end here, um, where we, uh, move into our public hearing mode and uh, the recommendation in your staff report is repeated here, although, um, added a, a third item to acknowledge those additional suggestions that we received today. Um, that I just reviewed. And with that, I'm happy to stand by with Winter and answer any questions as they come up.
So, um, shall we go to public comment or do clarifying questions first?
Let's go to public comment first. We only have fifteen minutes.
Yeah, let's, um, let's open it up to the public, Bridget. Are there any public comments there?
Um, I have one, yes. Let me, two. Uh, the first one I have is Paul Nagangas.
Good evening, Commissioner Staff and any remaining interested community members. Again, I am Paul Nagangas, live at two two nine Valdez Avenue. Very familiar with those, um, those came from our attorney and we've talked those over with our attorney, the those, uh, suggestions that you just went through. But I want to give you, from our perspective, obviously, uh, it's almost a case study what we went through on item one A. And and some of the, uh, problems or challenges we had to try and for us to understand or or to to staff to explain the process to us. So I, I'll go through what I wanted to share with you tonight. I was always taught in local government, no surprises. But if we do not follow the rules established, the expected outcomes are full of surprises and expectations become unknown, filled with frustration, anger, lies to see and all the negative attributes associated with pitting neighbor versus neighbor. To avoid a neighbor versus neighbor scenario, as and as an organized society, we establish rules to follow to remove the human emotions when something new is constructed by one person who wants to build on their property but next to another person's property. That's how we decided to respect each other's space. Follow the rules and staff can advise property owners and architects what the community has established is a safe and orderly development in Half Moon Bay. I do know periodically these rules and processes should be reviewed to ensure consistency and uniform implementation due to changing staff who implement the rules and the influx of new residents during various real estate cycles, which seems to be in Half Moon Bay an eight-year cycle. Hazel and I have continued to work with various agencies advising their staff of their agency's own rules when we make recommendations to their staff. For us to support breaking of a rule, as we indicated in item one A, we go against our core values of why rules are to be followed for development and not morphed into something different for a neighbor versus neighbor scenario. We have requested you to reduce cities' protocols and procedures for a process to ensure permit compliance and known outcomes to avoid the possibility of a permit holder to change plans from what was approved to something else that avoids the proper review and notification process. We believe the practice to redline plans or submit as-built drawings for approval indicating what was differing than what was permitted to be approved does not work for everything as item one A has shown. Redlining plans can work for minor changes to permits such as electrical interior lighting or other interior alterations. But major alterations, um, especially on exterior buildings or in this case, something significantly different than approved by the planning and coastal development, cannot be treated as a redline approval. In addition, submitting redline drawings after something was built creates an awkward scenario of not approving and forcing the applicant to remove those improvements. More redlining drawings of constructed improvements with more approvals leads us to the situation of item one A tonight. There were opportunities lost to catch the illegal construction prior to completion, but existing protocols and procedures did not prevent illegal construction. Furthermore, city staff admitted to us they have relied on us to advise them the illegal activities. Yet, when the neighbors reacted, th- they said when staff visited the construction site, the permittee was made aware the city's here due to neighbors' complaint. Process implemented by city have the extra layer of review when projects needing coastal development permits. Minor versus major amendments to CDPs, h- how many minor amendments make a major amendment? And how to ensure adjacent properties to development are duly notified of project and changes to the project directly affect them. These are all firsthand experiences we have been subject to the last seven months and have requested you to review. Our letter to you tonight supports staff recommended revisions. But we have also requested you discuss, and that's what, uh, you did see before me speaking, the additional criteria is neighbor outreach, postcard notice, after the fact revisions disqualified as minor and codifying noticing disqualification in objective thresholds. I was encouraged from a recent staff report in October that the city reported said, quote, "In addition to the city's standard notification prior to the AAC meeting, the advocate invited neighbors to..." prior to the AAC meeting, the applicant invited neighbors to the property for an open house to share their plans. Staff wishes to acknowledge this effort in consideration of the planning commissioner's interest in neighborhood sensitivity. We think this would be a great starting point for new projects for no surprises."
Thank you for your comments. Is there another speaker?
Yes, we have H. Jonas, followed by Bill Kors.
Hello again, Commissioners. I see you approved a non-conforming wall plane that was against the building guidelines. Mr. Hernandez, I do know that you were part of those building guidelines. And I do know that you most likely inferred that when you implemented those guidelines or when you recommended those guidelines, that those lengths that you recommended, like as twenty-five feet, were supposed to be the maximum amount that was necessary for an applicant to move forward. And it didn't imply that the staff could go over and above that amount. So I think in the future, maybe the staff could, and the commission could then go back and revisit those building guidelines, reestablish new guidelines to accommodate this new criteria that the Item 1A has approved. The planning director is asking the commission to confirm an unwritten administrative process and procedure used to determine which matters to bring before the planning commission. This staff recommendation implicitly seeks the commission's approval to validate the director's power of authority to sidestep the city's residential guidelines to allow the building official to make verbal approval of building plan changes without inspection and to continue the city's practice requiring agreement from the public to accept an applicant's illegal construction. This item also seeks the planning commission to evaluate whether the city's current unwritten and unpublished procedure and processes are conducive to a fair and equitable outcome for all residents, including the project proponents. I agree with the recommendations proposed by staff and also want the commission to require staff to conduct a thorough analysis of any changes with consideration to the city's building guidelines and zoning ordinance. In addition to the comments Miss Steinman's, our attorney, and Paul have made, I also urge the commission to require the city to implement quantifiable and defensible standard operating procedures and standards to handle and manage requests for amendments and require staff to never consider amendments for projects that they determine to be in violation. I encourage the commission to require staff to also conduct an equity analysis for all requested amendments to ensure that decisions the staff makes are fair and equitable to all. I also encourage the city to consider revising the building guidelines and/or revisiting them to conform with the decision the commission has just made on Item 1A. I also hope that Jill, if you are overworked and your staff is overworked and you do not have the resources to conduct very comprehensive reviews, ask the council to add more staff to your group. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Well, Bill Kors, 233 Valdez Avenue. Just a quick comment regarding the recommendations for review of plans with neighbors. I'll refer back twenty years to the Methodist Church project and the Seacrest projects, where in the first case, we did open house meetings for a three-block radius before bringing those plans to the planning commission. In the case of Seacrest, we had to work through two homeowners associations involving owners at Arnold Way as well as senior housing authority plus Mid Penn before bringing those plans through. Prior discussions with those entities made the planning process incredibly easy for not only us as applicants, but also for members of the planning commission and avoided eleven-thirty PM meetings on Tuesdays back in two thousand and two. So I'd like to see something a little bit tougher in terms of forcing applicants to review these plans with neighbors for residential upgrades. And I think if there had been thought given to this project when it was brought up two to three years ago, you could identify 221 and 229 Valdez as being critical notification parties to this application. And I think we don't want to make it onerous for an applicant to review it with sixteen neighbors in the Valdez Avenue area, but identifying one to two critical neighbors that they must review the plans with and be able to identify that in writing. Either it was done or the party refused to initiate a discussion with them on the plans before bringing it through will save everyone a lot of time, aggravation, and emotion. So just some thought to kind of toughen up those recommendations regarding reviewing the plan sets with neighbors and critical neighbors. That's it.
Thank you, Bill. Jill, are there any other folks who would like to speak?
I do. I do have one more. It looks like Camus Steinmetz.
Okay, good evening, Commissioners and staff. This is Camus Steinmetz. I represent the Owners and Residents of 229 Valdez Avenue. And as further explained in my submitted letter on this item, we're urging you to formally adopt a policy to provide a clear and consistent process and objective criteria for determining when and how plan revisions to a coastal development permit can be considered and approved as minor and when they must go through the more formal public amendment process that's forth in section eighteen-twenty-oh-eight-five of the municipal code. So as explained by my clients, we support staff's recommendations to provide enhanced noticing in the original CDP permit hearing stage and to revise the condition of approval language to require city engineer review of certain revisions. And additionally, we urge you to direct staff to prepare a formal policy for your adoption that one requires staff to consistently apply their objective criteria that's forth in the staff report on pages five to eight in determining whether a revision is minor. Two, disqualifies revisions from being treated as minor if they do not strictly conform with the city's single-family residential design guidelines, such as the amendments you approved as Item 1A. Three, disqualifies revisions from being treated as minor if they have already been constructed in violation of the original CDP approval for approved amendments that we just approved as Item 1A. Four, requires staff to deliver notice of intent to adopt any requested minor revisions to allow immediate neighbors with the opportunity to comment on these revisions before action is taken. And we heard the director's concern regarding the extra work. And I've modified this request to notice only the immediately adjacent neighbors rather than all neighbors within three hundred square feet. Five, requires the applicant to reach out and present their project to immediate adjacent neighbors before the original CDP hearing and document this outreach to the city. And I heard the director's concerns. I think rather than requiring neighbors to sign plans, documentation instead could be accomplished by mailed letters from the applicant to the neighbors or mailed invitation to an open house held by the applicant. And we believe this outreach would encourage the applicant to hear and address immediate neighbor concerns proactively before getting to the public hearing stage. So we believe such a policy is needed to ensure that coastal development permit revisions are being considered and acted on fairly, consistently, and objectively to avoid any potential loopholes in the coastal development permit process. We're hopeful that your action tonight will help other Half Moon Bay residents avoid the long, expensive, and painful process that my clients have endured with respect to their neighboring development. Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you. Bridget, are there any other speakers?
No, I don't see any. None.
Well, so I'd like to thank everybody for their comments again and also thank city staff for putting together this presentation. Do we have clarifying questions from my fellow commissioners? I can't see anybody if you're putting up a hand, so let me switch to panel mode.
No hands.
Okay, there you go. I got gallery mode going. So I'll sort of take a look at this. First of all, seventeen years ago, when I went through a new single-home residential CDP process and architectural review, there was nothing written down. There were no residential design guidelines. People told us we were fools for building in Half Moon Bay. We were going to lose all of our money, and it was a fool's errand. We, and our neighbor Sarah N. A., dutifully ignored those people and pressed forward. And it's worked out okay. So I think that we are in a process of improvement here, and there's certainly opportunity to make the process even better than it is today. I like the recommendations that have been put forth. And I think there's some interesting questions to be had around the recommendations by the legal representation from Paul and Joanne. I think the thing that I will just point everybody to for the residential design guideline is the opening statement. This is qualitative, and the recommendations, and they're not saying you have to do it this way. We're not trying to constrict or prevent architectural creativity. It says that in the opening document. I think it's important for people to actually read that opening statement. There's a lot of do this, don't do that, avoid these things. And it's an important part of the planning process. But architecture is something that sometimes you don't follow the convention, you come up with an outstanding result. I'm not saying 1A did that or didn't do it, but I'm just saying this is something we thought about significantly in the process. So now that other people have had a chance to get their breath, I'll turn it over to Jimmy for your thoughts, Commissioner Benjamin. Can't hear you. You're gonna have to, we're gonna have to start a mute jar.
Yeah. So you closed the public hearing, yes?
Let's close the public hearing.
So.
Public comment, sorry.
Public comment, right. So I appreciated your comments. That was a difficult hearing that we just finished. And I think it reflects the fact that the process of building and the process of amending existing structures is a chaotic process, that it is inherently a chaotic process. We can try to smooth it as best we can, but I mean it in a mathematical sense, that the closer you get to, you know, more exacting rules that describe more minutia, new areas that require discretion present themselves that might not have been visible. And so while nobody wants to have the experience of being surprised by a project that's been amended that, you know, there was some side effect, that it doesn't matter whether you're a neighbor or you're the applicant or your staff or you're a planning commissioner, nobody wants that. I don't think that is achievable to get to the point that we know they aren't. It's like bugs in software. The best we can do is to keep track of where our problems occur. I remember asking at a housing seminar where people were talking about housing projects. I said, "We can learn more if we find out about the problems," you know, in biological work when they're doing analyses of projects to rehabilitate. The guys that do that stuff professionally get it together at their conferences, and they have a special session in their meetings where they talk about the projects that they intended that had all the best intentions and screwed up. They talk about their dumpster fires. We should be doing that whenever, and this isn't a criticism of staff. This is just the reality that we're all human. You do it, I do it, everybody does it. But if we pick up our, where we, these collection of places where maybe the guidelines didn't work quite the way we would have hoped, or maybe we didn't execute them on quite the way we hoped, whether execution was by the applicant or by staff or by the planning commission or by the public, doesn't matter. But those, looking at those failures will help us identify patterns where we can whack the next layer of difficulties in the execution process. And from where I sit, this one had a couple. I think that if we had executed a little better in the stage where we were looking at the forms, for example, the concrete for pouring, we might have been able to miss this one. We might have been able to dodge this problem. And when I think about how we process our changes, if it involves pouring concrete, if I understood Jill's comment correctly, that's changing the physical form, changing the permeable surfaces. You know, if we had a policy like this, we would have caught that. So I think that's a reflection of one of the potential benefits of that project. After the fact permits are tricky, because there's a question of degree, if it's a fresh change and they need it after the fact permit for something they did recently, is it the same as if they are seeking it after the fact permit for something that was done five years ago or fifty years ago? You know, I don't know what the figure is. But I like the idea of erring on the side of caution when it comes to problems that come up that have potentially adverse consequences to, in this case, the adjacent property owners. And I guess what I don't see in the comments yet, and I don't have, unfortunately, I haven't got the words for it. Maybe it's because it's, we're coming up on eleven. But the idea, in the environmental community, we would call it the precautionary principle, that somehow, when it's unclear whether something should be major or minor or ministerial or minor, we err towards the side of being more careful, not less. You know, that there's a sort of a slight bias unless there's a compelling reason to go in a less precautionary way in terms of the way we process the amendment. I hope that was clear. I see puzzled faces, so I'll stop and think about how to say it more clearly. Thank you.
I think that was, that was good, Jimmy. Winter, you have your hand raised, so I'll draw attention to you.
Thank you. I just wanted to make a quick procedural note because I know we just completed Agenda Item 1A. Commissioner Gossett was recused from that due to her home being located close to the property. So I just wanted to make a general comment that this agenda item general comment that this agenda item is not about that particular development and that, that is done. Um, we are now talking about a general policy applicable going forward um when staff is presented with these questions of whether a proposed um modification is major or minor. So I know it's all on our minds because all of us, except for Commissioner Gossett, just um went through that prior hearing, but I just want to be careful to point out what we're talking about now is the higher level policy discussion.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Commissioner Ruddick or Commissioner Gossett, do you have any um additional thoughts on uh what's been put before us for this item? Commissioner Ruddick?
Well, I, I don't have many. I, I think as usual that um uh Director Ikas and staff's judgment about next steps here seems pretty sound to me. I, I think we, there are good ideas that are certainly worth the kind of trial uh that uh the staff report recommends with enhanced uh signage outside the site. And, and there, there are others that would seem to me that first blush to be like overkill, like not, not the right level of, and the too mu- too much effort with, with the speculative return to be had from that. So I'd, I'd be fine with supporting the, the uh next steps that the staff report uh indicates.
Commissioner Gossett?
Thank you. It's late for me, so I, uh, I did um just want to say I like the recommendation that staff had come up with and I did review the, a letter from um the attorney and thought some of the uh suggestions uh in terms of, you know, creating objective standards on what is major versus minor could be very helpful and helpful to staff and hopefully, um, and what else did I want to say? Yeah, and I really think um I like the idea that you um recommended. So basically, I, and I concur with the fellow commissioners. So I don't want to have to repeat what they said. Thank you.
Um, I'll um sort of take a couple of points. I like the signage. Um, I like the idea of putting some kind of, you know, smaller scale drawings there and telling folks where they can look if they want to see more full-sized um drawings. I do think, just as a matter of protocol, if you can have a process for when a project changes to maybe update the signage uh with new drawings or put something that visibly like maybe having orange tape when a project changes so people can see that there's something new uh on the signage might, might be helpful. You guys are at least as creative as me. Um, so I'm sure you can come up with something, but I, I do really like that idea of the signage. I have concerns about the neighbor outreach, but I, I think there's a way to handle it. Um, you know, that encourages people as part of the process. Hey, when you submit your plans, you can tell us, did you actually talk to your neighbors? Um, having that be part of the staff, we, again, how you handle it and how you document it, um, I, I, I think that city staff has ideas about how to do it, but I do like the idea of encouraging neighbor outreach. I know that um when I did my project, I had neighbors with pitchforks and torches at my hearing because they were under the impression that I wanted to do something um that was a complete misunderstanding and we quickly addressed that during the hearing, but boy, it would have been nice not to hear none of my new neighbors rip into my project. Um, so I think that encouraging that, continuing to encouraging that and maybe beefing it up a little bit better, it would be great. We've gotten away from a Kafkaesque planning process that used to be torture for people. Um, it was unclear, it was uncertain, and it used to be like if there was even the slightest bit of doubt, projects got shut down and, and people felt like they couldn't get anything done on their projects. And so I think there's merit in some of the suggestions that have been made around tightening up the process, better documenting what's minor versus major in terms of changes and having clear policies on that. But I'd be very concerned about going, taking steps back to where we were before, where it was, it was a nightmare to do even the most minor change in Half Moon Bay. We've got much more well-defined processes that we've put in place in the last twenty years, so just be careful about following the California rule of just putting in too much bureaucracy and making it really hard for people. So I, I think y- you guys have all done a really good job here and we could improve things for sure. I think that would be good. Uh, Commissioner Benjamin, I see your hand raised. This, you gotta put something in the mute jar.
Sorry, a couple of other things. Um, you know, when we uh uh, there are other places where we ask, uh, where we ask for judgment in the staff reports such as sequel exemptions or compliance with conditions in our, in our conditions, there's a little section where we describe why we think something is the way it is. It's exempt because the structure is, you know, uh, tiny or it's for habitat improvement and, you know, it fits into a sequel exemption or something like that. It may be that asking uh for a, a ministerial or a minor uh amendment provide that additional level of thinking in some written form so that people can look at it and say, oh, I understand why it's minor, or wait a minute, I don't, I don't agree with that. That project, that, that amendment doesn't feel minor to me. Um, or maybe ministerial is more cut and dried. I'm, I'm not sure. And another way to think about this is if we look back at the last few years' worth of projects where we've had an amendment and it's been controversial, I wonder if they are a potential rich source for mining, thinking about how uh we could choose to characterize major and minor, and I'm gonna guess that staff has already done that. Um, but if they haven't, uh, or if you have ideas about projects, I mean, the Vice Chair Hernandez was just talking about his own experience and maybe mining that for a few ideas could be worthwhile. Um, but you know, maybe there's room for all of us to do that. I think that's what I heard from the speakers on this item was trying to mine from that experience. Um, and I want to acknowledge that we should be doing that for all of the projects that we look at and say, you know, when you get close to that, that's a little bit hairy, so, you know, let's take advantage of our chaotic experiences and learn from them.
So Jill, do you have everything you need at this point?
I think, um, I think I do. It's really helpful. We would like a little more time, obviously, with the input that we received today because it was, it was really thoughtful and um you, you got some nice comments about it as well. Um, Winter and I will talk about how to follow up with you. This isn't um concluded. And so give us, give us a little bit of time to do that. Um, I, obviously, we're being um incredibly careful. This is not something where we feel we have a um, a track record where um, this has been of issue. And so we wanna, we wanna be really thoughtful about how we implement and um we've got some opportunities here to uh do, do some of the nice work that we like to do with neighbors. Um, and I will say that we, again, we do ask our applicants to reach out to the neighbors, um, and it's, it's tricky. So um I'm gonna also go back with staff. Um, all of us have worked in different jurisdictions and we all have experience with um what works maybe a little bit better and uh we'll, we'll pool that background and see what we can come up with.
And, and you do project reviews, like when you have a significant project, you guys sit down. I mean, some, some people may assume you don't do that, but I, my observation is I think you do that already, correct?
We, we do a lot of project review, yeah.
All right. Um, so what do we need to do here?
I think you can just acknowledge, I, we, we had a recommendation, if you want to make a motion and encourage us to um come back to you with um, I think a memo to start with and then we can um go from there.
Can I get such a motion? So moved. Can I get a second?
I seconded.
Should we get a roll call vote?
Yes, um, Commissioner Gossett?
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Yes.
Um, Commissioner Ruddick?
Yes.
Um, and Acting Chair Hernandez?
Yes.
Approved. Acknowledged.
Okay, um, so we now have the planning or uh director's update?
We will.
Anything for us?
Bear you tonight, yeah.
Excellent. And do we have any um commissioner updates?
Um, nothing.
Okay, well, I hope everybody has a lovely Thanksgiving and you enjoy some much-needed time off. And uh with that, I'd like to get the final vote for the evening. Can I uh get a motion? Commissioner Benjamin?
Moved. To adjourn.
Can I get a second?
A second.
Commissioner Ruddick?
Commissioner.
All right.
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Yes.
Commissioner Ruddick?
Yes.
Acting Chair Hernandez?
Aye.
Everybody can go home.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.
Bye, everyone.